Welcome to the October 6, 2016, meeting of the National Capital Planning Commission. We do have a quorum, so we'll call the meeting to order and we'll proceed relatively in the order that's been publicly noticed. What I'll note is that we have two action item agendas, two action items on the agenda. We're going to switch them. The MLK item is listed first. We'll actually take that second and we'll take up the FBI project first. And many of those who called to speak have been notified of this change. They were going to take it up a little bit earlier. Agenda item number one is reported by the chairman. I have two items to note. First, one of our longtime colleagues, Herbert Ames, who was Bush appointee and served from 2005 to 2011 from South Carolina, passed away recently. All of us who remember Herbert remember his gregariousness and his enthusiasm for service and his significant contributions to this commission of the nation. And we mourn his passing and we have expressed our condolences to his family. Second, many of us were delighted to attend the September 24 opening of the National Museum of African American History and Culture. We had President Obama, President George W. Bush, and former President Bill Clinton were in attendance. Many members of Congress and congressional leaders, the cabinet, and 7,000 other people turned out to share in that wonderful experience. And if, it's my own notion that as more and more Americans experience the exhibits inside that building, it certainly can be transformative on them, for sure. And I also want to note that that extraordinary project came about in part because of the work this commission has done. And I want to acknowledge two members of our staff, Ken Walton and Michael Sherman, who dedicated many weeks, if not years, months and years on that project. And so we celebrate their good work as well. Those are my notes. Any questions? Or if not, agenda item number two is the report of the executive director, Mr. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a few quick things to go over. You might have noticed that an important piece of American history is in our lobby, a panel of the AIDS memorial quilt. This panel was displayed along with many others during the quilt's occasional appearances on the National Mall over the last three decades. It's an early example of an innovative approach to commemoration, an idea that we further explored through our recent memorials for the future competition with the National Park Service and the Van Allen Institute. And we thank Julie Rhodes, the executive director of the AIDS Project. She was also one of our jury members for lending us this most important commemorative work. I also want to note that our memorials for the future exhibition is still at the Kennedy Center Hall of Nations through October 20, so I do hope you do get a chance to see that. And CPSC's open government plan that establishes goals of various initiatives that make the agency more open and effective, and its core work is posted online on our website. We will be accepting public comments through October 27. And finally, I'm pleased to announce that Sarah Ridgely and Jennifer Hirsch of our staff has been promoted to senior urban planners. Sarah will continue working in our physical planning division and Jennifer will move over to our policy and research division. Congratulations to both. And that concludes my presentation today.
Any questions for Mr. Costa? Agenda item number three is the legislative update. Ms. Skyler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually have two items from which I'd like to report. One is HR 6001 and one is Senate 3314. They're identical bills and they're called the Smithsonian American Latino Museum Act. Both bills require that they designate the Smithsonian's arts and industry building, including the new underground annex facility, as the Smithsonian American Latino Museum. They authorize the Smithsonian Board of Regents to consult with the Secretary of Interior, CFA, and NCPC and other appropriate federal and local agencies to prepare plans to design, renovate, rehabilitate, and construct the museum. Finally, the plans are to be completed within 18 months of passage. In the House, this has gone to three subcommittees. In the Senate, it's gone to one committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Skyler? Agenda item number four is the consent calendar. I'll note that we have three items on the consent calendar. Item 4A is the installation of green infrastructure for the D.C. Clean Rivers Potomac River Project A in Washington, D.C., submitted by D.C. Water. Item 4B is for visitor screening and conference center additions and building renovation at the William McChesney Martin Jr. Building in northwest Washington, submitted by the Board of Governors of the Federal Reserve System. And last, agenda item 4C is the rehab of Buildings 6 and 7 at the Potomac Annex, 2301 Constitution Avenue Northwest, submitted by the U.S. Institute of Peace. I will note for the record that I need to recuse myself from item 4A, which is the D.C. Water Project for conflict purposes. With that, any questions on any of those items? Hearing known is their motion on the consent calendar.
It's been moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the consent calendar say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. And I recuse myself from item 4A. Moving to the agenda item, we only have two action items, but both are significant and we expect a good discussion and perhaps lengthy discussion on each when we have public comment as well. So we hope to move through these expeditiously. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. I'd like to just make a public note that it's not a project that NCPC was engaged in, but it's pretty significant to us, East of the River, the opening of a new restaurant on Martin Luther King Avenue. I won't give the name of the restaurant because it may be false, improper advertising. But we think it's going to be a very stimulating and a very important presence in our neighborhood. So all will be welcome when we open the doors.
You're buying.
I'll be glad to buy for that.
Thank you. We will move first to agenda item five, I've lost my agenda, 5A. Agenda item 5A. I've lost my...
5B.
5B. Yep. Yes. Thank you. Agenda item 5B, the approval of preliminary square guidelines for squares 378 and 379, which is the current site of the FBI headquarters, for transmittal to the General Services Administration. The commission previously provided direction on square guidelines at a concept stage at our June meeting. We directed staff to provide additional analysis of viewshed and development impacts, establishing the Bill 2 line along Pennsylvania Avenue, and commented favorably on reestablishing D Street Northwest. So we have with us Ms. Miller, who has spent considerable time on this, and welcome.
Can we go beyond? Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. And I just want to note, there's a lot of other folks in this room that have also spent good, long, hard hours on this project as well. So I want to acknowledge their contribution and their effort to this. So as you know, NCPC's staff is presenting the draft square guidelines for your preliminary approval and transmittal to GSA for squares 378 and 379 on Pennsylvania Avenue. The site is currently home to the J. Edgar Hoover Building that houses the FBI headquarters. And as you know, this site is part of a land exchange that GSA is pursuing for the development of the new headquarters on a suburban site in either Virginia or Maryland. While these are two individual projects, they are tied in that the value here will help offset the cost of the suburban location. Upon completion and acceptance of the new FBI headquarters by GSA, the exchange partner will receive free simple title to both of these squares, 378 and 379. Before I actually began and get into the presentation itself, I just wanted to point that at your dais, there's an errata sheet that highlights two corrections to the recommendations and the executive director's report. I will go over these as I proceed through the presentation. And these will also be reflected in the square guidelines as well. So just wanted to point that out and we'll look at them as we move through. So the site consists of two squares. As I've mentioned, 378 is to the north and square 379 is to the south, fronting on the avenue. The 1974 Pennsylvania Avenue Plan actually identified this site as a transition zone between lower-density residential and cultural uses to the east and higher-density commercial and hotel uses to the west. The existing FBI building is not eligible for listing in the National Register. And today, it actually encompasses about 1.9 million net square feet of office space. And much like the, like much of the avenue, this block was originally supposed to be lined with ground floor retail. However, that was never implemented. So therefore, the size of this public space is often blamed for the lack of activity, while such a wide area does seem like an awful lot of pavement. The single-use office, the absence of ground floor retail, and the perimeter security are also core problems. And we're optimistic that the redevelopment of the site is going to help alleviate some of those issues. To help organize today's presentation, we really have five parts. The first is to recap the purpose of the square guidelines and review the development process. And the second is to talk a little bit about the evolution of the avenue, which has actually helped inform our discussions and the development of the guidelines. The actual meat of the presentation is parts three and four, which is to review the Bill 2 line analysis and the height analysis that the commission directed in June. And lastly, we'll talk a bit about the remaining square guidelines before we turn it over for the commission's discussion and vote. So the first part of the presentation is going to recap the purpose of the guidelines and the process. So unlike the rest of the city, where local zoning regulations pertain to individual sites, Pennsylvania Avenue is very unique, not only because of its national significance, but also its location, well, and its location within the city. Instead of zoning, Pennsylvania Avenue is guided by a congressionally mandated plan, which will refer to the 1974 Pennsylvania Avenue Plan, as well as square guidelines. And this work was actually originally informed by two presidential commissions. Congress has entrusted GSA, the Park Service, and NCPC to implement the 1974 plan and to serve as the avenue stewards, balancing the economic and civic value of Pennsylvania From its inception, the avenue's location between the White House and the Capitol defined its function and its character, eventually evolving into the most significant symbolic and ceremonial street in the country. Together with the residences, offices, hotels, restaurants, and cultural institutions that are here, it also contributes to the city's network of successful neighborhoods and downtown workplaces. The significance of this location and the scale of this redevelopment is a tremendous opportunity to strengthen the economic vitality and the livability of this neighborhood and to provide a 21st century modern office workplace and continue to serve as a national destination. It will be highly visible as it has over 520 feet of development fronting on the avenue. So the square guidelines that we've developed do essentially four things. One is to maintain the public realm, the landscape and the vista that elevates Pennsylvania Avenue above any other street in the district and for the country, for that matter. To allow high-density mixed-use development, including a maximum allowable height of 160 feet on square 378, again, unique to any other area in the city. Also to provide guidance regarding circulation and to encourage contemporary urban design and architectural practices that will also respect the historic and neighboring context. The existing building was constructed over D Street, creating one large, single-use office that essentially is surrounded by a moat, except for the frontage on the avenue. This is a little over a six-and-a-half acre site. It's roughly equal to three to four downtown city blocks. And for comparison purposes, the four blocks to the east encompass about seven-and-a-half acres and well over 2 million gross square feet. Redevelopment of squares 378 and 379, with an allowable height up to 160, which some of these other projects didn't take advantage of, should allow for even more square footage, resulting in one of the largest development projects in the city. So it's important to understand how these square guidelines fit into the development review process. The review process for projects, and as I said, the review projects for projects within the PADC boundary are very different from any other in the city. While zoning regulations will apply, the square guidelines take precedent if they are more specific or detailed. Because of this, the district is an instrumental partner in the development of these guidelines. While the Historic Preservation Review Board and the Commission of Fine Arts review processes will still apply, it is actually the NCPC and GSA staffs that will ultimately review the development plan and the building permits against the square guidelines for consistency. So therefore, the guidelines must provide enough information to evaluate future development to protect local and federal interest. If they're too general and aspirational, we really won't have anything to measure the development plans against to ensure that those interests are met. So I'd like to briefly talk about the evolution of the avenue. And so we've developed these guidelines with an understanding of both the Pennsylvania Avenue's history, as well as its current planning foundation. For over two centuries, plans related to Pennsylvania Avenue have helped shape the corridor as we know it today. In 1971, Le Font designed Pennsylvania Avenue as a large avenue with an 80-foot cartway and with 40 feet on each side with walkways and a double row of trees, distinguishing it from other city streets. By 1901, the cartway was increased to 107 feet, taking space from the sidewalks to increase that dimension. So we ended up with 26-foot sidewalks with a single row of trees. And as we move through time, you'll notice that as building technologies change, the height of buildings also start to increase, which is an important concept to think about as I move through the presentation. So by the time the McMillan Plan was prepared, 20 to 30 years later, the federal triangle, and with implementation of that McMillan Plan with the federal triangle on the south side of the avenue, buildings were going higher and we began to actually alter the Le Font plan by setting these buildings back within the building yards. So this increased the distance between the curb and the building, but the smaller sidewalks remained. With the additional setbacks, the height of the buildings in the federal triangle actually equaled the distance between the building and the center line of the cartway. And this is a principle I'm going to talk more about in the presentation. By the 1970s, the avenue had fallen into disrepair and the 1974 plan was an effort to revitalize and reclaim the avenue's unique role as the physical, symbolic, and ceremonial link between the Capitol and the White House. And again, the 1974 plan further altered the street. The cartway was reduced back closer, was reduced to 100 square, or 100 feet. The north sidewalk was increased for new development to accommodate the heights of buildings, pedestrian activity, amenities, and multiple rows of trees. And this additional space, he actually set the buildings back about 50 feet to accommodate those requirements. It's also important to note that they added seven feet to the southern sidewalks to actually accommodate the double row of trees on that side of the avenue. What is interesting is that the 1974 plan, in many ways, tried to recapture part of Le Font's vision by reestablishing the public spaces that he originally envisioned for this great avenue. So the conditions along the avenue today are not what Le Font intended or envisioned. As the avenue has evolved over time, there have been changes to the cartway and sidewalk widths and the building lines, which we'll explore during the presentation. Each of these plans is important, and they've actually heavily informed our discussions regarding development of the guidelines on parcel 379. It's also important to note that the site lies within or in proximity to a number of historic districts, buildings, and landmarks, including the Pennsylvania Avenue National Historic District and the National Historic Site. Recently, the National Park Service completed the Pennsylvania Avenue Cultural Landscape Inventory that documents the unified cohesive streetscape of the avenue. The CLI finds that the parks and tree-lined sidewalks have been transformative and contributing elements to the avenue's 20th century identity and its desirability as a destination for locals and citizens. While the CLI emphasizes the significance of a unified landscape, including the large tree canopies and the gracious promenades and rooms for outdoor programming and events, we all know that some aspects of the streetscape are no longer supporting the avenue's 21st century role. This grand 75-foot promenade establishes, while it does establish a unique character and a sense of place, the space is not easily contained, it limits pedestrian interaction, even it may not feel comfortable to some, and it separates pedestrians not only from each other, but from the activities that could be going on within the buildings themselves. So while a variety of options on the sidewalk widths have been discussed, and some stakeholders believe that this large setback should be reduced, which is what we're going to be exploring today. So while we look to our history and contemporary practices to inform our actions, we also need to look to the future. The Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative is in the early stages of addressing how to better balance stronger economic vitality with improved physical conditions along the avenue. There are a number of legitimate differences in points of view being expressed, but a decision has not really been made yet on the avenue's future. This work is running concurrent with the square guidelines, and decisions on square 379 will likely influence the vision for Pennsylvania Avenue. Since the initiative is in the early stages, staff's recommendations on square 379 are based on today's conditions, not a pre-decision of a future condition. So I'm going to focus now, actually, dive into the analysis, and I'm going to first talk about the Bill 2 line. And once we get through this, I'll talk about the heights. But to start out with the Bill 2 line, so I wish this, it was as easy to determine what the Bill 2 lines would be here as it is on other downtown streets, but unfortunately, that's not the case, because Pennsylvania Avenue is very unique. The Bill 2 line influences the amount of developable area, as well as the function and character of the public space. And as I mentioned, there are differences of opinion on the application of where this line should be located. These opinions range from maintaining the Bill 2 line where it is, or actually moving it back to the Le Font plan right-of-way. Ultimately, what we're trying to do is to find a balance between the economic and civic needs to ensure that the parcel can be, the site can be developed at its full potential and contribute back to the city's vitality, but also ensure that the character and function of this public space in the Capitol vista is retained for the avenue to fulfill its national and local roles. So as we start to talk about the Bill 2 line, for, I think, some of you may know what a Bill 2 line is and some in the audience may not, but to briefly just to define it, so a Bill 2 line essentially is that line at which the exterior wall of a building must coincide. So for the purposes of the discussion today, I'm going to be talking about Bill 2 lines in terms of building setbacks from the property line. Now, usually, this is a pretty straightforward calculation, but not on Pennsylvania Avenue, because the property line does not coincide with the curb. And I'm going to just put my little thing on here. So actuality, the curb is here on Pennsylvania Avenue. That's about a 20, in front of the FBI building, that's about a 27-foot setback. So we actually will be taking our Bill 2 line setbacks from this property line. This is the original Le Font right-of-way line. And I'm also going to be referring to sidewalk widths. And when I refer to sidewalk widths, that essentially is the distance from the curb to the building. So just to recap, and I believe the chairman has, did this at the onset, but on June 2, the concept, at the concept review meeting, the commission directed staff to prepare a visual and technical analysis for a range of Bill 2 lines on the avenue, based upon the factors that are listed here. So we've spent time studying this and discussing the Bill 2 lines with agency stakeholders. We've gotten and requested input from the Commission of Fine Arts, as well as the public, on the recommendations that I'll be reviewing with you. But regarding the Bill 2 line analysis, I'm going to focus on essentially three areas, which is the developable area, the building walls and the context, and the public space and landscape. I will then cover some of the other topics when we start talking about building heights. So while we did study the 0 to 30 range, we actually studied this in 10-foot increments, and we have also evaluated it against the existing 50-foot setback for comparison. We have documented this analysis, but to keep the amount of information manageable today, I'm going to focus on 0 and 30-foot setbacks. And we'll also be discussing the 50-foot along the way. We've heard and considered many opinions regarding the location of the Bill 2 line and really are working to balance these options and putting forth our recommendations. So based upon our analysis, we are recommending a 30-foot setback from the property line to meet several performance criteria that will help retain the avenue's character and function. These are to respect the vista to the U.S. Capitol, provide public space that can accommodate a program that supports this area's local and national role, and make sure that we have ample room to ensure the function of the public space is flexible enough to accommodate the variety of civic uses that occur here throughout the year. And I'll be touching upon the basis for our recommendations as I review the analysis. And I'll also be pointing out the changes that we made in that errata sheet and the corrections as we go through. And if I don't, Julia can remind me. Okay. So specifically, the 30-foot setback from property line will allow, will actually result in a 57-foot sidewalk that will accommodate a clear pedestrian zone of 14 feet, the double row of trees as Le Font originally imagined, and this will, and they will align with the other trees along the avenue. And it will accommodate 24- to 30-foot activity zone or that can accommodate cafes, public seating, and the civic functions that traditionally take place along the avenue. So let's focus on the analysis, and I'd like to start with the developable area. And I think this is a recap of some of what you heard in June, but I think it's very important, is that as we start to balance a number of objectives, we really need to make sure that square 379 is buildable and yields a reasonable square footage to support the redevelopment of the site, while we also are introducing D Street to the north. So we've actually summarized three conditions here. We've looked at 0 and 30 and 50. Each of these scenarios assumes that D Street is reestablished at its full width of 70 feet. Even if the 50-foot Bill 2 line is maintained and D Street is reestablished, it will yield a developable parcel commensurate with other triangular parcels within the city. Two examples are 655 K Street, which is an office building, and 400 Mass Ave, which is a residential building. A 30-foot setback, which is staff's recommendation, will yield additional square footage, because we're moving that building line 23 feet closer to the property line. This is also comparable with other triangle parcels within the city, such as 601 Mass Ave. And of course, moving the building line to the property line will create the largest developable area, but the difference between a 0 setback and a 30-foot setback is approximately 150,000 square feet or so, if we, assuming that the building would be about 11 stories So now, taking a look at the building walls and the surrounding context. Now, I'm going to go through a couple of diagrams that will just orient you to the conditions along the avenue and how they relate to squares 379. So this diagram illustrates where the building lines are today. On the north side, the dark green depicts new buildings that were developed under the PADC, and they all sit 50 feet or more back from the property line. The red and orange lines depict buildings that sit at the property line, and these are historic buildings that were preserved or buildings that are integrated with historic buildings when the PADC plan was implemented. South of the avenue, the blue lines depict most buildings in the federal triangle that sit back about 20 feet from the property line. So as proposed, moving the Bill 2 line to 30 feet, in our opinion, helps to transition between the eastern and western blocks. You'll notice that Market Square, just at this corner, is an effort to hold this plaza, is at about a 10-foot setback from the property line. And we go to the west, the block to the west, and this is 1001 Pennsylvania Avenue, and it sits back 50 feet from the property line. And I should note that it will always sit back that far, because D Street, there's a, the area in front of it is actually part of the, the former D Street right-of-way. So it's a kind of a protected area. And this transition will come a little bit more evident when I do, when I share our modeling towards the end of the presentation. This cross-section helps illustrate the relationship between square 379 and the Department of Justice across the street. With a 30-foot setback on square 379, both buildings are setback 57 feet from the curb. When PADC redeveloped the avenue, as I mentioned before, when they redeveloped the avenue, they added the seven feet to the south to accommodate the trees. And it's also, just to note, that some of the building lines do vary on the south side, but the majority of the southern sidewalks are over 50 feet wide. So the 30-foot setbacks helps to maintain the balance that respects the vista to the Capitol, serves as a transition between Market Square and 1001, and it also provides the public space needed on square 379 that I'm going to focus on next. So this is how the tree canopy frames the avenue today, particularly for many bicyclists and tourists who visit the city. They spend quite a bit of time here, taking that, taking their selfies in this great shot. Sometimes I worry about them. But this diagram depicts the open space system and how these spaces are framed, formed, and transitioned. Square 379, which is in this location here, is part of a linear landscape that connects and transitions to Market Square. and transitions to Market Square, as well as the plazas and Freedom Plaza, and the smaller spaces like the OPO Plaza and the Mountain Fountain. So all of these important, large and small civic spaces along the avenue are connected with this, the continuity of a linear streetscape, creating an important rhythm and sense of place along the avenue. So to understand the spatial dimensions necessary for the public space, we need to define a program for this area. And since the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative is in the early planning stages and we don't have a program to rely upon there, we're using today's conditions to help define what these spaces should accommodate. So using the avenue's established streetscape program, we've identified the spatial requirements for things such as pedestrian pathways, healthy trees, the activity area, that can also accommodate street furnishings and special events that take place here. So to understand what these spatial dimensions are, this actually diagrams the width of the sidewalks that I mentioned earlier, and they must be adequate enough to accommodate the program. So on the north, the dark green indicates where sidewalks are either 50 feet or greater, and in cases like Market Square, the sidewalks actually integrate into a larger plaza area. The red and pink areas illustrate where the sidewalks are 25 feet or less, which coincides with the location of the historic buildings that I've mentioned before. And south of the avenue, you can see that we have a fairly consistent light green area that indicates where the sidewalks are between 42 and 57 feet, again, with many of them being over 50, and the Department of Justice is at 57. So there's a subtle difference here, so it's, okay, so if we move our building up to 30-foot, a 30-foot setback, this does result in a 57-foot sidewalk, which mirrors the Department of Justice. And again, it starts to provide a transition between the narrow sidewalks to the east and in front of Market Square to the west to the higher density development. So this diagram actually indicates where the tree canopy. So the sidewalks and the tree canopies are closely linked. So the green areas depict where we have three rows of trees along the avenue today. The red areas can only accommodate a single row of trees because, again, this is where the historic buildings are, and the yellow areas indicate where we have two rows of trees and include most of the federal triangle and parks to the west, or to the east, I'm sorry. So moving our building up to a 30-foot setback will actually allow us to retain enough space to accommodate two rows of trees and provide that continuity and the unified landscape and the importance of that to the avenue, as I spoke of already. So what does that feel like? This is an example of approximately the same spatial dimensions that we're proposing. This is on I Street where there's a 55-foot sidewalk, and right out of this picture here, you can't see it, this is located, this cafe, which is about 21 feet. So these are similar dimensions that we're proposing for Pennsylvania Avenue in front of parcel 379. So I'm going to focus a little bit on special events. As we all know, we have a very important one coming up very soon, so we've been sure to talk to the inaugural committee representatives, and we've confirmed that reducing the setbacks along the avenue's north side will not significantly impact the ability to host the parade. However, while viewing stands have been used on 379 in the past, and this actually shows an example, this was during the Bush administration, they actually did use viewing stands on Pennsylvania Avenue. They're not doing so right now because they're trying to keep the viewing stands because of the southern sun. They're moving the stands to the south so people have a better view and don't have the sun in their eyes. So although representatives have advised that the configuration of viewing stands can change, let me start over, so the representative has also advised us that the viewing stands can actually change among administrations. So when one administration may use them in one location, that can change over time. And they also pointed out that it's important to retain the character of the avenue. So in addition to the inaugural that occurs once every four years, we also have, the avenue also hosts more frequent events. More than 100 annual parades, races, and festivals that track hundreds to thousands of visitors occur here every year. Some of these, some of these events occur along the whole avenue, the entire length of it, and others only within a segment. And then some of these actually will close off the street. So it's very important that when we have these events take place, that our public spaces outside of the cartway are able to handle the crowds that will often visit here. So in summary, the 30-foot setback is recommended because it accommodates the public space that retains the elements that elevate the avenue's character as distinct from any other city street. It provides a gracious amount of space that can be used for daily activities and the variety of special events. It meets the intent of LeFond Plan sidewalk promenade and complies with the 1974 Unified Landscape Vision in the PADC plan. So a 30-foot setback actually allocates 23 feet of public land for private development that is currently under the jurisdiction of the National Park Service, but it also maintains the civic function and character of the avenue. So as I've mentioned, we have a range of opinions about where this building line should So there are several advocates who prefer returning the building line to the property line, which may be consistent with our historic goals to avoid adverse effects, but it also yields the greatest amount of developable area. So what actually is our, what's the result of this when we return back to the property line? It will create a 27-foot sidewalk that will still have a 14-foot clear pedestrian zone. We're only able to accommodate one row of trees, and they typically will be smaller trees than what's there now, and there'll be no, then there's no room for any activity area or flexible civic space. So while building at the property line may be consistent with the LeFond Plan's building wall, it does not meet LeFond's intent for the public space, such as the 40-foot walks and the double row of trees. This 27-foot space that results here cannot accommodate the civic uses, as I've mentioned. So a return to or a move closer to the LeFond Plan built-to-line will yield a greater, a greater buildable area. It's at the expense of the public space, under today's conditions, and that's an important thing to note, and I want to talk more about that. So here are some examples, actually, these are actually on the avenue. These are where we have historic buildings that have been preserved at the property line, and this is the resulting condition. The first is Evening Star here on the left, and then 601 Pennsylvania Avenue to the right. And so because of the location of the trees, we have varying amounts of clear zones for pedestrian access, and in some cases along the avenues, that the distance may range from 24 to 27 feet. So there are four points along the north side of the avenue where the sidewalk briefly narrows between 24 and 27 feet. So the sidewalk is much, but what I also would note, that down here at the W and the Willard, and as well as at the museum, even though they sit at the property line, there's some unique situations that are occurring. So at the, at the western end, at the Willard, the building sits at the property line, but they actually, the sidewalks are actually larger, so the curbs sit further into the cartway. And then at the museum, even though there's an overhang that sits at the property line, but the base of the building has been recessed in order to provide additional pedestrian So if we move, I don't know if you saw that move here, but if we move the building on parcel 379 up to the right-of-way line, we have increased the building sitting at that property by 520 feet. So it's a significant change from the current condition. Then, this actually shows where the LeFond cartway would be, and I think it actually is a little bit, demonstrated a little bit better here, is that if we return the building walls to the LeFond Plan, and I hope you can see, that's essentially that green line, the green dashed line, it would require, it will require reducing the cartway and moving the curbs for the entire length of the avenue between 3rd and 15th Street if we want to provide adequate public space envisioned by LeFond, but also that we've identified as being necessary for our own public space programming today. So this is an example of how the northern sidewalk could be extended to meet the intent of LeFond Plan. The curbs would be relocated 20 feet to the south and the cartway reduced. And again, this would need to occur along the length of the avenue. So while ultimately moving the built-to-lines to the LeFond right-of-way may have merit, and it's something we should look at, we believe at this time it's pre-decisional. To locate the curbs and reduce the cartway is going to require a number of studies, such as a transportation study, we'll be required to look at NEPA and 106, go through the consultation process, we'll look at, we would have to evaluate a number of alternatives, and it really deserves a public debate. In addition, if a decision is made to return to the LeFond built-to-line, it will result in a new streetscape along the entire length of the avenue. Right now, there's no local or federal commitment to fund this significant project, at least that we know of. And additionally, the 1970, oh, I should also mention that the '74 plan would have to be amended to reflect this new vision. And before we would actually have the assurance that we could implement that vision, that we would need to have a funding commitment. So essentially, a decision to move the building to the property line is premature, forming it, prematurely forms a new vision for the avenue. But the opportunity does exist for this to occur between now and before a developer would submit a redevelopment plan, because we do know that it's going to take some time for this exchange transaction to take place and plans to be developed for this redevelopment site. So with that being said, I can get this to move here. I'd like to review our recommendation. So realizing that these studies and approvals to relocate the curbs and the cartway could be done before a development plan for the site is prepared, our recommendation acknowledges that the curb lines could be relocated if certain conditions are met, and those are meeting the public space criteria, as we've discussed, an amendment to the 1974 Pennsylvania Avenue Plan to establish that new vision, and a dedicated funding source is confirmed to implement the infrastructure and streetscape improvements that are necessary. So that concludes the built-to-line analysis. What I'm going to do now is run through the height analysis. And as I mentioned before, the built-to-line and heights are intricately related, and together they form the building wall that contributes to the framing of the Vista to the U.S. Capitol. So this Vista contributes to Washington civic image and is a defining feature of the plan of the city of Washington. Both the federal and local elements of the comprehensive plan of Washington contain many policies about protecting and enhancing this Vista. The green canopy frames the Vista in a way that mediates the varied building lines and open spaces along the avenue, particularly at the eastern end. So to analyze the heights, we looked at exist, we looked at the existing context. So just to point out that several buildings on the north side of the avenue have initial heights, on the, on the east side of the FBI site, they have initial heights of 100 and 102, and they step up to about 140. This is fairly consistent along the eastern end, and when they do rise up, they step back quite a bit to reach up to 160. To the west of the site, where we have higher density development, the initial heights are higher, about 115 for new buildings, and you can see here, this is actually Evening Star, and it's actually, it's at 132, I think I might have a typo there, at the building line. But with the new development, these buildings have lower heights, and I'll explain how those heights were derived, then they step back and step up to 160 feet. So this just gives you a kind of a very quick snapshot of what is occurring with the heights along the avenue. So the blue area to the south is the federal triangle, and most of these heights are fairly consistent between 100 and 115 feet. They step lower and then they have roofs that step back up to their higher heights. And on the north side of the avenue, we have some more varied conditions, but essentially, with the exception of the projects to the east of the square 379 today, these heights start at about 130, well, 114, 135, but those heights are based upon the distance by which they're setting back from the property line. The red actually shows where the heights step up to 160, so you can kind of see how that works as a, as a concept within the PADC plan along the avenue. So just focusing in on the FBI site or square 379, the thing I really want to point out here is the red line, that's the important line. So I mentioned that the initial heights are always set back from the property line for new development, 50 feet. So we have a 50-foot setback from property line for that initial height, and then they step back and up to 160. That 160-foot line is 100 feet from the property line today. So any additional height above that line will actually start to obstruct the view cone, the view area, the clear area to the U.S. Capitol, and I'll illustrate that in a moment. So now, we'll talk a little bit about the visual analysis. And as I mentioned, the built-to-lines are important because of where a building sits on the street in relation to other buildings can positively or negatively impact the view shed, and this is particularly true when we start to combine it with height. So this is the principle I was talking about a little bit earlier. I know in your packets, we had given you actually a snapshot of how this principle works down the entire avenue. Today, I'm just going to focus on a couple of examples. But the McMillan Plan and the 1974 Plan both respected the LeFond Plan Vista to the Capitol through the use of this design principle. And essentially, it's a one-to-one ratio between the distance between the center line of the right-of-way that's on center with the U.S. Capitol. So the distance of that, from the center line to the building face, equals the just, the height of the building. Essentially, it forms a right angle. And this principle establishes a view that is proportionally balanced and helps unify the north and south sides of the avenue, establishing a Vista that frames the Capitol, which is a contributing element to Washington civic image. And this is, this is an example taken at 1201 Pennsylvania Avenue. So just on the other side, on the north side, the PADC plan actually looks at an 80-foot cartway, which is the LeFond Plan cartway, plus a 50-foot additional setback for 130, and then the building is about 132, but that's the height of the building in this location. So it's starting to really, it's starting to create this clear zone or an unobstructed view to the, to the Capitol. So moving down the street, this is the FBI site today, and it's obvious here that the building today does not nearly reach its development potential, and it has a, has quite a bit of potential in order to stay within that, that view cone that I've described. This is actually the proposal, staff's recommendation, which is a 30-foot setback, which would allow 110 feet height initially, and then stepping that building back up to 135. So, so given that, and based upon our analysis and looking at all the relationships, staff is recommending that the initial height of, and this is a little, it's going to take me a minute to explain this, because, we're actually recommending a 30-foot setback from the property line, but because our recommendation acknowledges that the property, that the building line could move closer to the property line once the additional studies are done and the funding committed, we don't necessarily know what that height would be. So we're very careful here not to try to define the height within the guidelines. So it's based upon that principle that I just described. So the guideline would actually read, "The initial height of buildings on square 379 fronting on Pennsylvania Avenue should not exceed the distance as measured from the center line of the right-of-way to the building face or to the established building line to ensure," excuse me, "that the Vista of the U.S. Capitol remains unobstructed." And just to note that we have also looked at the initial building heights on the other streets, 9th, 10th, and D, and consistent with all development throughout the city, the recommendation is that those built-to-lines should be at the property line, so they should bill out, build all the way out to that, that property line. And we're recommending that the initial height of these buildings, and this is a correction I want to make, so 11B, E11B2 talks about the initial height of development. "The maximum initial height of development fronting 9th, 10th, and D Street should not exceed, should be 120 feet." And a little bit later in the presentation, I'll talk about how we derive that. And then the other here, 11B3, is that the maximum height of development should not exceed 135. And I should note that- And I should note that once you start building, once you start stepping your building up and back and based upon the triangular configuration of this parcel, once you reach over 140 feet, your floor plate at that top floor doesn't ideally meet the space that you need for mechanical equipment to support a project like this or leasable area. And then finally, we talk about upper-story setbacks on 379, and we're looking that any portion of a building above the initial height should be stepped back on a one-to-one relationship. So what that means is that once you hit your initial height, let's say of 110, you step back 20, you can go up 20. You step back 10, go up 10. So that's how that guideline would work. So actually, how does this start to manifest itself? So we have just a couple of images we'd like to show about with the buildings, with the building coming 30 feet from the property line, or setting back 30 feet from the property line, and going up to the 110 initial height. We're going to look at five views along Pennsylvania Avenue, and then one looking up 10th Street from the mall, and then we're going to cover three that actually look at the heights around Square 378 to the north. So this is the existing condition that we have today from Creedham Plaza. This is the, just the modeled version of that, just to help you orient yourself. And I'm going to bring the FBI building up to a 30-foot setback and 110-foot height that would allow it to step up to 135. This next view is at EPA, looking towards 12th Street. This is the model condition, just to give you an orientation. And this is bringing the building up 30 feet from the property line at 110 height, then stepping up to 135. And you start to actually see where D Street starts to come in here at this location. And in this particular area, you know, what's going to be very important about this building is that this is essentially the point of the building or the apex, and there's a rhythm of these buildings along the street. So I think it has a lot of potential, design potential here, to be a very unique building along the avenue. And also, at this height and step back, or setback, we don't feel that it will compete with the U.S. Capitol, so that it will actually be complementary too. This is essentially the 12th Street intersection. You can see the FBI building here. This is the modeled, this is just the modeled existing condition for orientation. Now I'm going to bring the building up to a 30-foot setback, 110-foot height. So you're starting to see the prominence of the building, and I think what's particularly interesting here and a bit challenging, and we've talked about this a lot in developing the guidelines, is with the 520-foot frontage along the avenue, we really look, we need to figure out how to tame that, so to speak, so how to break up that long facade to make it more pedestrian-friendly and more architecturally compatible as part of the composition of the streetscape. So this is looking back from the Mellon Fountain area. The FBI building is way down here. You can see Market Square here. This is the existing condition modeled, and this is bringing the building up 30 feet with 110-foot height. So what's interesting is that 1001 is still visible in this location. And when you start to move the building up, you actually start to lose the fact that 1001 is actually there. And this is a view from our archives, National Archives, the FBI building. And this is where you can really start to get a sense of its length along the avenue, its presence. This is the existing condition, and this is the proposed condition of 30-foot setback up to 110, and how it really starts to, it really does begin to really create a much stronger building wall along the avenue and to really feel its presence there. And again, but not competing with its neighbors. So I'm going to, because we've looked at Pennsylvania Avenue, it's also important to look at D Street, which I call its other front. So I want to talk a little bit about that. And just as a reminder, that on June 2nd, the concept review, the commission commented favorably on re-establishing D Street at the LeFond Plan configuration of 70 feet wide, if these parcels are redeveloped. So this is here, just to give you an indication of the circulation around the site, as well as how D Street would continue from the east through the intersection to the west towards 10th Street. So this is the condition that we have today. Of course, you can walk out on D Street and see this now, except maybe you're on the bike. This is opening it up for a 70-foot right-of-way. So this really begins to physically and visually connect essentially Judiciary Square, which is an important site within the LeFond Plan, to Pennsylvania Avenue. The buildings that you're seeing ghosted in in the background is actually the corner of 1001. Because of the angle of the avenue, you actually see the corner of that building, but predominantly you get a view down towards the avenue, and then that's EPA in the distance. So how does that, how does that work along the avenue, as well as its relationship to Parcel 379? I'm going to talk a little bit more about how we get to the height on 378. I'll talk a little bit more about how to get to the height, how we got to the 120-foot height. But essentially, what we're recommending is that the height on 379 on this side of the building equal that or be similar to that as 378. This shows you the 70-foot right-of-way. This is not intended to be a design of this right-of-way, it's just an indication of what you could fit within that 70 feet and how that relates to adjoining blocks. So this is that condition modeled. So this is buildings at 120 feet stepping back to 135 on 379 here on the left, but the buildings on the right would actually step up to 160. So let's talk just very briefly about 378. So in June, the commission acknowledged that the square guidelines would provide additional, the development on 378 in accordance with the Hyde Act to try to get, to allow it to go up to 160 feet, but also acknowledged that we would need to look at the initial heights on this parcel, as well as the upper-story setbacks. So that's what I'm going to focus on now. So this is just a quick orientation to what's going on around the site. When we get back into, we're starting now to get back into the city grid, and we really want this site to start to relate to the development patterns of the city and connect back to the city. So looking at these initial heights, the building that we're in now is at 120 initial height, stepping back up to about 139, 140. And then along East Street, they vary. We have historic buildings that are about 45 feet, stepping up to 112, and then ultimately, the ultimate height is about 130, 131. And then the condition along East Street's a little different because they're taking their cues from Pennsylvania Avenue. But the initial height here is 114 on the avenue, 108 on East Street, and then those heights do step down to be compatible with and to integrate with the historic buildings here that have been preserved. And this is, I think, one of the better examples of how we've integrated new contemporary development into an historic context. So our height recommendation here, again, it's a bit of, I'm going to explain it. Wish these guidelines were simple, but. So on Square 378, "Height of development shall comply with the following. Using the 1910 Hyde Act and the district zoning regs as a guide, the maximum initial height for Square 378 shall be the height as established by measuring 110 feet from the highest elevation on East Street, regardless of the street on which it fronts." So what does that mean? I'm going to, and then I'll cover this, and then I'll try to explain what that means. So any portion, as far as the upper-story setbacks, the recommendation is that any portion of the building above the maximum initial height would set back a ratio of one-to-one until reaching the ultimate height of 160. So I'm going to use this, just, actually, I'm going to go through here, I'm going to use the next one, I think it might be clearer. This is just a view looking east on East Street. You can see the FBI here on the right, and this shows what 110, initial height of 110 would look like, stepping back and up to its ultimate height of 160. Now, well, this is a good image to show this. You can see this little undulation or wave in the street that's actually indicating that the street dips, so it moves up and then it dips down towards the center of the block, and then it rises again. The highest elevation around Square 378 is right near or at the corner of Ninth and East Street. So in an effort to maximize development potential, and we think it's actually compatible and appropriate, we're suggesting that the height be taken from this corner, which, and if you apply the principle that we've suggested, it would allow you to go 110 feet. But because the topography of 378 changes, we actually go from higher elevation at this intersection, and as we move towards Pennsylvania Avenue, we decline and the elevation decreases. But when we project that 110-foot height across the site, we actually get 120-foot buildings at the corner of Ninth and D Street. So I know that's, and I can try to explain that on some other images if it's helpful. But I just wanted, I said earlier that I would explain where that 120-foot height is coming from, and that's how we got to it. So this is the, again, the existing condition, and this is showing the heights at 110 stepping back. And this is just, the last view is looking up towards, from the National Museum of Natural History, looking north. And this actually gives you a sense of how much the current building sets back from the property line, because when we actually look at how it would be redeveloped, we're going to bring that building back out to the property line, and so that it fits back into the regulated pattern of the district's urban development pattern. So that actually concludes my presentation for the most part. In respect of your time and the amount of information that we've just gone through, I've actually am suggesting that perhaps if you're interested in looking and getting an overview of all of the other guidelines, which I'm happy to do if anyone has any questions or would like to talk about them, but that would refer you to pages 20 and 21 of the Executive Director's Report. And these are the guidelines that we feel that we've, for the most part, have reached consensus on. And again, we can talk more about those, but I was going to refrain from going through all of the summary of that additional information. So that brings us to our recommendations, and essentially, we have kind of packaged them into four areas. One are the square guidelines, where we feel that we have general agreement. The second is to look at the Square 379, which includes the guidelines for building lines and building heights and upper-story setbacks. And oops, sorry for the numbering problem there. Number three is Square 378, which deals with building heights. And number four is that we are requesting that the commission direct us to release this, the actions that you take here today, and the square guidelines for a 30-day public comment period. And I guess just before I wrap up, I leave this image here, I want to just, to share, that we wanted just to show how our recommendations would kind of fit in with the character of the city and its relationship to Pennsylvania Avenue. This is not intended to represent a design, it's not intended to represent a building configuration, but we just felt that it would be, to give you a sense of how this site would redevelop and fit in to the neighborhood. So with that, our general, we would look to the general recommendations, which is to approve the draft square guidelines listed in items 1 through 18 below for Squares 378 and 379 in accordance with the memorandum of agreement, and transmit the preliminary action to GSA under Section 5 of the 1996 memorandum of agreement. And would you like me to run through all of them, or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. And since we've actually, I've detailed a lot of these throughout the presentation, I won't read them all again, but I'll sum them up. So the second package here is to approve Square, the Square 379 build-to-line and height guidelines. Guideline E10A is dealing with the build-to-line, which we're requesting, it's, we're suggesting be 30 feet from the property line, but also acknowledging that that line could move closer to or at the LeFond Plan right-of-way line, or the property line, if certain conditions are met. And then looking at the initial height along the avenue, again, it's based upon that one-to-one principle, so it's the distance from the center line of the cartway to the building face is the, basically determines what the height of the building would be, and that the initial height of development on Ninth, Tenth, and D not exceed 120, that it could step up to a one-to-one ratio for a maximum height of 135. The third package addresses parcel, or Square 378, which really has two recommendations for height. The first is the initial height, again, it's more of a performance standard, but using 110 feet at the highest point on East Street and allowing that to be projected over the site as the initial height, and then allowing a one-to-one setback up to a maximum height of 160. The reason you don't see the recommendation here for the 160 is that's something that the commission commented favorably on last time, and that's included in the first package, which is where we've come to agreement. And lastly, direct staff to release the commission-approved draft square guidelines for a 30-day public review period. So that completes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, providing additional information that may be helpful for your discussion. Oh, thank you. I think it's that.
Thank you very much. We will go to public comment now and then give you a chance to rest, but reserve the right to use you as an extraordinary resource. We have a number of, I think we have nine people who have appropriately signed up for public comment, and we'll go through those. If you're speaking for yourself, you will have three minutes. If you're speaking for an organization, you'll have five, and we kind of know who you are. And so, given the length of today, we will try to stick closely to those time limits. First is Aaron Hesenger with, is Aaron here, GSA? And then, following Aaron will be Dominic Cardella, and then Joanne Newhouse. So Aaron with GSA, five minutes, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and commission members. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on behalf of the General Services Administration. My name is Aaron Hesenger, GSA Project Executive for the FBI Consolidation Project. Okay, better? Had this problem last time, too. GSA would like to thank NCPC for its efforts in developing the draft square guidelines. We commend NCPC staff for the immense amount of work that has been accomplished and appreciate that it was not an easy task. The EDR outlines substantive analysis and reasoning, but it also correctly notes that there remains significant disagreement over the development envelope for both Squares 378 and 379. While there are a number of recommendations with which we agree, we do not support the EDR or the current square guidelines. In order to address our more significant concerns, we respectfully ask the commission to reject the proposed draft guidelines and withhold public comment until staff undertake a holistic analysis of applicable planning, urban design, and development principles, rather than focusing on elements in isolation. The unresolved issues for GSA include the Pennsylvania Avenue build-to-line for Square 379, the width of D Street and its function, the initial heights on both squares, and the maximum height on Square 379. In June, GSA's testimony outlined specific concerns regarding the square guidelines that were echoed by some members of the commission. I'm going to restate those now for emphasis of their importance. Again, square guidelines must be developed holistically. A focus on individual elements rather than a cohesive, coherent whole results in a level of detail and prescription that would negatively impact urban design quality and will reduce the value to the taxpayer. We recognize that both the LeFond Plan and the 1974 PADC Plan have standing and must be respected. However, the restoration of D Street to its historic configuration without also moving the Pennsylvania Avenue build-to-line to adhere to the LeFond Plan seems arbitrary, seems an arbitrary pick-and-choose approach that fails to respect the integrity seems an arbitrary pick-and-choose approach that fails to respect the integrity of either plan. In making your decision, GSA encourages the Commission to consider the impact of the square guidelines as currently written and their potential to stifle future design opportunities. As such, we suggest that the guidelines be developed in a less prescriptive manner with a consistent methodology and with an approach that maximizes the opportunity of future design. As I concluded in my June testimony, we realize and embrace this effort for its importance to achieving development objectives, allowing the FBI Headquarters consolidation project to move forward, helping the city realize new economic benefits, and to the continued fulfillment of Pennsylvania Avenue's role as America's main street. However, it is important to note, should the square guidelines fall short of meeting these objectives, GSA has the authority to employ an alternative approach to complete square guidelines for the Commission's review. Again, Mr. Chairman, thank you again for the opportunity to provide testimony on behalf of the General Services Administration.
Thank you, Aaron, very much. We may call on you later. Second is Dominic Cardella. Welcome.
Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me three minutes to express my views. My views will be focusing particularly on square 379. I have been a business owner and resident of the Penn Quarter for 44 years. Development issues of the Penn Quarter are of particular interest to me, especially when it has to do with the most historic street in the nation, Pennsylvania Avenue, the People's Avenue. I am passionately opposed to any development on the existing FBI site that does not have the interest of the entire nation as its primary focus. The smaller of the two squares, squares 379, is of particular interest, as I mentioned to me, to me, rather, and it would be, as it would be to any person visiting our great Capitol. We do not need another office building on this square, nor do we need a building that has a narrow setback from the street interfering with the beautiful vista up and down the avenue. All the great cities of the, of the world have their grand avenues. We must keep this stretch of Pennsylvania Avenue between the White House and the Capitol grand. If maximizing the total amount of square feet is the, is the, of the buildings is crucial, then D Street needs to remain closed. Reopening D Street would add nothing to improving the traffic flow and would greatly diminish the total square footage of the buildings. If for some reason it becomes necessary to open D Street, perhaps a tunnel passage might be considered, allowing development from the second floor upward. A plan should be considered so that any development facing Pennsylvania Avenue serves the interests of all people, not just self-serving developers. My vision to making this avenue greater is to have, yes, another museum, but a museum whose time has come, a national museum entitled "A Nation of Immigrants." How many times have we heard our political leaders using the expression, "We are a nation of immigrants"? Let's demonstrate this. Such a museum would attract the attention and participation of foreign embassies here in our city and create tremendous daily activity on this historic avenue. A grand Pennsylvania Avenue sidewalk as wide as the existing sidewalk would provide the space for a variety of outdoor cafes, serving foods from all over the world, with retail shops, displaying and selling the arts, crafts, fashion, and wares from a variety of countries. The combination of outdoor cafes, retail establishments, and museums would create tremendous vitality to this historic avenue and get tourists to cross over to the north side of Pennsylvania Avenue. A museum above the first-floor restaurants and retail establishments would tell the stories of people who have immigrated to our country and demonstrate the many contributions that immigrants from all over the world have made to make our country the great nation that it is today. Such a project would create jobs, provide tax revenues, but most importantly, create something that would be a major attraction, not only to local residents, but to all visitors from all parts of the world, and a source of pride for our citizens, a museum that we can all relate to. An office building could never do that. We have plenty of office buildings that are already standing vacant. Every great city has its grand avenue. Let's keep our historic avenue vibrant and grand for generations to come, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Cardella, very much. Next up is Joanne Newhouse, followed by Nancy Somerville, and then Serge Demersian.
Wow.
Welcome back.
Thank you. My name is Joanne Newhouse. I'm an urban planner who since 1970 has worked exclusively on projects and issues in this part of downtown. Today, I'm representing the Penn Quarter Neighbor Association, whose members include Penn Quarter property owners, hotels, shops, restaurants, office tenants, a cinema, residential condominium associations, apartment buildings, theaters, museums, and art gallery, churches, a synagogue, and many other nonprofits. So it's a very diverse group. I'm going to try to speak quickly, because I can't get this all in five minutes. But based on, I did this last time, based on GSA's testimony, you ain't going to hear what I was going to say entirely. I'm going to start at the end of my presentation, which is that, where I said, now I briefly want to address the need to require, not just encourage, uses that are not as individually remunerative as our office buildings. Though developers have told me that their properties are more valuable because they are in mixed-use neighborhoods, they don't want to be one of those who contributes to that mix of uses, because that may reduce the return on their investment. Evidence shows that they do so only when required. Long before the city did so, PADC required not just encouraged residential and arts uses, including a 500-seat theater in the Landsberg. GSA itself required more residential units than specified in the plan, as well as a theater on the Clara Barton and Lafayette site across Seventh Street from the Landsberg. Over time, PADC also learned that it also has to specify that certain ground-floor uses, like restaurants and outdoor cafes, needed to be required in specific locations, such as Market Square and on Pennsylvania Avenue. There are blocks of Pennsylvania Avenue where we have a daycare center because it's considered a related arts use. Now, I have never figured out how that can happen. And also, we have space on Pennsylvania Avenue between Sixth and Seventh Street where there is an office on the ground-floor use. Those are dead blocks, so it's very important that you require, not just encourage, certain uses in certain places. There is no site, and this is contrary to what GSA says and what they think, there is no site within or near Pennsylvania Avenue boundaries that has a, that has residences, an art gallery, art space, a theater, or a cinema that was built voluntarily. What is important to include in the square guidelines are the minimum requirements for uses that many consider less remunerative but extremely desirable for the neighborhood. These are residential, restaurants, outdoor café seating, smaller retail shop, and the arts. There are other points that I wanted to make, like you need to, to decide where these uses are located. There may not be a market to have retail uses on every street, on every outdoor space, so you have to really decide the importance, locations where these uses are, should be required. It's also important, with such a large site, to define minimum development parcels. This was done throughout the plan's square guidelines. Everything I'm saying are things that PADC did. They're not new, but there's things that aren't being done now because of GSA's position, which I think is unreal. It isn't what happened, and you won't get a mixed-use development, the way you want a mixed-use development, unless you require some of these uses. For the rear buildings to obtain the 160-foot height, there will need also to be a single lot of record. I am now going to go back and start at the beginning, and I'll do as much as I have time for. Mainly, I probably won't read this, but mainly, I think that Elizabeth pointed out, the one-to-one ratio will allow for the vista to be maintained. That is so critical. Can we have that slide up? I'm sorry, I'm still on this days of slides and not PowerPoints. Everyone talks about historic preservation. Yes, that's fine. But I do think that the most important historic building is the U.S. Capitol. It's important not only to Washington, to Pennsylvania, it's important to the nation, it's important to the world. It's a symbol of democracy. I'm sorry, I'm really scared about democracy today. I think the point of having the one-to-one relationship is, is a way of defining how that setback has to work. If the property line does get moved, and I think if the cartway can get moved, and if there's funding for that, if there's something else like a PADC that can get funding, if there's a Sid Yates up on the Hill that will grant the funding, that will say, "No interference with this agency, no lobbying it. It should make decisions based on the plan and make good decisions." And I think for the most part it did. Sometimes it didn't, but most part it did. I am so deviating from this.
Thank you for your testimony.
But you got the picture, didn't you?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Very clearly. Thank you very much.
I do think that the landscape is important, and if I had my choice, I would keep the 50-foot setback. I think it balances the avenue perfectly. Is my time up?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Nancy Somerville. And again, followed by Mr. Demersian. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and comment on the FBI square guidelines. I'm Nancy Somerville. I'm CEO of the American Society of Landscape Architects, and I speak on behalf of ASLA. My testimony this afternoon concerns the build-to-line on the Pennsylvania Avenue side of square 379. ASLA opposes the recommended change and strongly supports maintaining the existing 79-foot sidewalk and the three-row colonnade of trees. As stated in the Executive Director's Report, Pennsylvania Avenue is the most symbolic and ceremonial feature of the nation's Capitol. NCPC is correct to focus on the critical goal of protecting and enhancing this iconic space. We commend the Commission for the thorough analysis that went into development of the proposed guidelines. However, we believe the recommendation for the build-to-line along Pennsylvania Avenue significantly undervalues the existing setback and the presence of the mature tree colonnade. Visually, the 79-foot setback and the three rows of trees contribute to the overall importance and the ceremonial feel of both the block and the avenue. Those same features provide an urban oasis for pedestrians. Anyone who has walked that block during the summer months can attest to the welcome relief provided by the mature trees. The layout of the trees in front of the building and along the avenue emerged in the early 60s in the design of landscape architect Dan Kiley with architects Skidmore, Owens, and Merrill. As Kiley wrote, "The design was created to incorporate Launfond's axial avenue into the contemporary urban situation with parallel double and triple bands of little-leaf lindens." Kiley's lindens are now willow oaks that create large areas of beautiful dappled shade over a large area of a plaza-like sidewalk. They are arranged in a quincux pattern, spaced alternately on centers from row to row to render their pleasing spatial effect. To remove any of the rows destroys the pattern chosen by the designer. In addition to evaluating the site through the lens of economic, civic, and historic preservation concerns, we need equally to recognize and consider environmental needs and goals. The Executive Office of the President, the U.S. General Services Administration, and the District of Columbia have all identified important environmental sustainability goals, recognizing the need for maintaining and enhancing the natural systems that are essential to healthy communities and individual human well-being. Natural systems, like the mature trees that currently front the FBI building, are essential for cleaning and cooling the air and cleaning and retaining stormwater. The 2013 Sustainable DC Plan acknowledged the challenges this city faces with water and air pollution, contamination of lands, and the preservation of natural spaces, tree canopy, and parks. DC had already established a green-area ratio that defines minimum areas of green landscaping to manage stormwater, improve air quality, and mitigate urban heat island effects. The 2013 plan added the goal of expanding the tree canopy to 40%. In 2011, the Obama Administration issued Guidance for Federal Agencies on Sustainable Practices for Designed Landscapes, a follow-up to Executive Order 13514. Based on the Sustainable Sites Initiative, or SITES, the guidance is to be used by federal agencies for landscape practices when constructing new or rehabilitating existing, owned, or leased facilities, or when landscaping improvements are otherwise planned. The goals include using landscape design to enhance community and create spaces for relaxation and restoration, maintaining existing historic landscapes and plantings, and using trees and other vegetation to promote long-term storage of carbon and reduce the urban heat island effect. More recently, in 2016, GSA adopted the principles of the SITES V2 rating system in its 2016 facility standards. In doing so, the agency noted that use of the SITES framework will better protect ecosystems and enhance the mosaic of benefits they continuously provide our communities, such as climate regulation, carbon storage, and flood mitigation. The environmental concerns and goals outlined in these federal and city documents should be incorporated in the FBI square guidelines. Finally, there will be no, there will be few or no opportunities in the future to add green spaces and civic spaces to downtown DC. That argues replacing a very high value on the landscape spaces that remain. While we welcome the departure of the FBI building, we cannot afford to lose the grand civic space and the landscape of mature trees that has humanized the building's face on Pennsylvania Avenue. Long-term community, civic, and environmental concerns and goals should not be set aside in favor of short-term financial and development interests. We urge the National Capitol Planning Commission to maintain the existing building setback on Pennsylvania Avenue and protect the three-row tree colonnade. Again, we appreciate the work of the Commission. Thank you for your time and consideration of our concerns. We'll be happy to provide any information, additional information or assistance as review of the guidelines proceeds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Somerville, very much. Next up is Mr. Demersian, followed by Ed Finer, and then Carol Atten.
My name is Serge Demersian. I'm on behalf of Federal City Development Partners, so thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commissioner, members of the Commission, to provide comments on the draft square guidelines. NCPC staff has done an amazing and thorough job in preparing guidelines that uphold the PADC principles through a committed and contextual approach. My comments can be summarized into three parts: the PADC plan and build-to-line on Pennsylvania Avenue, the density and its relationship to the various upper-story setbacks and building heights, and the vision for the project. The urbanistic massing from the PADC plan has resulted in inconsistent viewshed, which we all feel is paramount, but is currently fractured and consistently interrupted. Please consider, when you look at the stretch of Pennsylvania Avenue between the White House and the Capitol, when you discount the Hoover Building and any other buildings that have front yard plazas, the remaining 50%, the remaining structures, which are predominantly historic in nature, take up half, over 50% of that stretch. This project can play a vital role in restoring that vista. It has the opportunity, just like the museum project did, to play a contributing role of recreating that street wall. The architect Richard Rogers summed it up best in his submitted comments, "Let's be reminded of what Hausmann did in Paris." Those view corridors in Paris are recognized worldwide, and those are a product of three simple concepts: monuments at the ends, consistent architecture, and consistent zoning that is defined by a uniform street wall. We obviously have the monuments. We are, we are at the past, we are at the point of no return for the consistent architecture, but certainly cannot, certainly not the consistent street wall. My point here is why we're perpetuating unsuccessful zoning principles by upholding the PADC plan when we have an opportunity to learn from it, improve it, or fix it. If you'd like the view corridor to restore the Launfond Plan, create a critical mass of mixed-use development to bring this area and this street back to life, I urge you to consider the 0 to 10-foot setback in lieu of the 30-foot recommended setback. Regarding density, street wall height, and upper-story setbacks, and the building height, the contemplated massing that staff has developed for the site, specifically square 378 and its relationship for the required density, is outlined in the guidelines. As stated, the density target is a minimum 10 FAR commercial with an unlimited FAR for residential. However, it's restricted by bulk mass and height. Square 378 is approximately 480 feet wide by 410 feet. I stipulate the diagram that was prepared is notional, however, the structures that are 225 feet by 410 feet with a 20-foot alleyway. Our analysis reveals that this massing, applying a minimum 16-foot ground-floor zoning and 11-foot-six undesirable commercial floor-to-floor height maximize the number of floors. This scheme, along with the stated bulk mask, bulk mass and height regulation, yields only an 8.7 FAR, well short of the 10. And we haven't even talked about the unlimited FAR regarding residential. Also, since- and residential buildings are about 70 to 80 feet wide, this alternative massing would yield a much lower FAR than the current unrealistic massing scheme. The proposed street wall heights and building heights are simply a product of an extreme contextualistic approach by reviewing neighboring non-relevant structures as the basis of these decisions, while the upper-story setback comes from an inconsistent regulating line delivered from the PADC Plan. Again, that line is not consistent with the historic structures. A one-to-one upper-story setback is not practical when the buildings are only 7 to 80 feet wide. By the time you step in the minimum distance to achieve the height, you've run out of building to occupy. Right now, we have density targets that cannot possibly meet, setbacks that do not align with today's development principles, and a conservative contextual approach based on irrelevant nearby structures. I urge you to consider loosening the zoning sweater by three ways. Apply traditional street wall heights zoning to these quarters similar to the rest of the city. Apply a one-to-two upper-story setback limit, again, similar to the rest of the city, and apply traditional maximum zoning heights that allow penthouses to go beyond the maximum height. Lastly, I want to talk about vision. As we embarked on this process in April, I had tremendous hopes and dreams of what this place can be and how it could transform this neighborhood. To me, this process starts with sound zoning principles, zoning that allows flexibility, promotes the capital market to impose what it needs to be to be successful, and I stress this, this location matters. Forgive me, I'm from New York, so I relate this as I know best. This site in Washington, D.C. is D.C.'s version of Fifth Avenue in Central Park South. The GM Building with the glass apple cube, the Plaza Hotel, or another analogy, is your piece of boardwalk in the Monopoly game. This location should have the highest and best use with the most value, and should be a transformative catalyst for change or renewed interest with this important corridor, another city center, if you will. My dreams were washed away when I started reviewing the detailed draft guidelines when every aspect of this future opportunity had been constricted, squeezed, and suppressed. The future opportunity to bring a brand-name architect, to give them the flexibility to create some inspiring work worthy of this location, has wilted away. In the end, if the intent of this Commission is to promote inspired architecture, maximize opportunity and value, to enliven and animate the streetscape along the nation's most important pedestrian corridor, fundamentally, in our view, these guidelines do the opposite. Several agencies, numerous members of the public, architectural and planning professionals, have expressed the desire to reinstate the LaFonte planning principles. Even if you do not agree with my contrary viewpoints, my simple question is, why does this process now prematurely need to restrict the envelope so tightly that we've eliminated all creativity and flexibility of this future opportunity? Please consider loosening or unzipping this constricting sweater to allow a development team, along with a notable architect, to come back to you with tangible ideas that are enlightened by the capital markets in order to have an informed dialogue. Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Finer, again, followed by Carol Atten, and then Cheryl Court.
Hello, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. The last time that I actually was in this room speaking was when I was the chief architect of the General Services Administration, but I've been gone for about 11 years, so I am now speaking for myself.
Welcome back.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. I wanted to really focus on design for a few minutes because very often, excuse me, very rarely do we have an opportunity to do something that is really remarkable accomplishment within the nation's Capitol in terms of architecture. We have some wonderful projects that have recently been developed. The African-American History Museum, fantastic accomplishment. But too often, when we get into the fabric of the city, we constrict ourselves too much, and we take away from the flexibility and the imagination and creativity of designers to actually come up with imaginative new ways to accomplish many of the things that were discussed here, from mixed-use development, housing, offices, shopping, all of the things that we want to make a vibrant city. Whenever I'm on Pennsylvania Avenue, it's fantastic. I mean, the vistas are wonderful, and once in a while, there are a lot of people there. But very often, when it gets dark, it starts to really get dark, and activity sort of falls apart. What I think we should try to strive for is for using design and creativity of the American design community. This is planners, landscape architects, and architects together to come up with some proposals that will, in fact, address doing something in our generation, and many of you are kind of close to my age. So this is kind of a last chance on Pennsylvania Avenue. When Daniel Patrick Moynihan first wanted to build America's Main Street or redevelop it, it was really important that it was something that was unique and very American. And I think that, at this point, doing things that are too constricting on the planning, and I appreciate the comment, "This is not a design," but those envelopes do become a design ultimately. So I really would really request that the Commission really look at where does performance and where does prescription, where is the right balance? And I think there are lots of questions, like D Street, how many feet setback, there are a lot of issues here. But if we do it from an administrative level purely, but not open it up to the best, finest minds that are available to us in the nation's Capitol, I think we'll miss an opportunity. So although I appreciate the comment, "These are not designs," too often, they do become the designs, and I would hope we can do better for America's Main Street.
Thank you. Ms. Atten, welcome back.
I'm Carol Atten. I am representing the Committee 100 on the Federal City. The Committee of 100 is pleased to provide comments on the draft Square Guidelines for Squares 378 and 379, the current site of the J. Edgar Hoover FBI Building. We would like to commend the Commission's staff on their excellent and illuminating analyses of alternative locations for the Build Two line and height configurations. The modeling showing the impact on the vista was most useful in understanding the implications of the decisions you are making here today. We know you all are well aware that this is probably a once-in-a-generation opportunity, as was just mentioned, to make decisions with this level of impact on the future vitality of Pennsylvania Avenue. The right development of this site must not be sacrificed at the altar of economic development. I would also add that, while I really love the idea of good design, I'm not sure that that's the answer either, because the prescription versus unrestricted. The right redevelopment of this site must not be sacrificed at the altar of economic development. This is valuable real estate, but its value and that of other property on Pennsylvania Avenue rests on the kind of requirements that you are now considering. We need an attractive and vibrant Pennsylvania Avenue. This site and Pennsylvania Avenue overall are important to our city and to our country. In general, we agree with the Executive Director's recommendation. We found the discussion and rationale cogent and persuasive, but would like to provide a few specific comments. We concur with the recommendation to reduce the width of the sidewalk and put the Build Two line 30 feet back from the property line. From the modeling, it is clear that this creates the best frame for the vista of the Capitol. Buildings to the property line, the LaFonte line, would clearly intrude on that vista and make the sidewalk too narrow for a lively streetscape and civic activities. This section of Pennsylvania Avenue should be alive and attractive with streetscape features, outdoor cafes, artworks, et cetera. These activities require appropriate width. While the LaFonte line would seem to be, to have historic merit, it was predicated on a much narrower avenue and makes little sense in today's context. We recognize that the current building line, 50 feet back from the property line, is consistent with the 1974 Pennsylvania Avenue Development Plan. However, we now know from experience and can see from the modeling that this width creates a gap in the frame of the vista and the street wall, and bleeds the energy from the streetscape. The proposal before you creates a good transition between the surrounding blocks, allows for two rows of trees, provides space for enlivening uses, makes room for civic activity, and best frames the iconic vista of the U.S. Capitol. We also want to note our support for the heights as proposed in the guidelines and the strict limitations on signage. We would like to see guidelines that are strong and as detailed as possible directing lively uses along the avenue. The required uses will be a critical element of any new development if we are to take advantage of this important opportunity to add vitality to the nation's Main Street. We strongly support the proposal to reopen D Street as part of the LaFonte grid. However, we would like the possibility of using it solely for pedestrian use to continue to be on the table. We believe a vehicular intersection at D10th will be awkward. We would like to see below-ground parking and loading entering from Ninth Street and exiting onto East Street considered as an option that would allow D Street to be pedestrian only. We agree that a coordinated parking and loading system is needed for the whole complex without any of that on Pennsylvania Avenue itself. The Committee of 100 has a long history of interest and participation in the planning and development of Pennsylvania Avenue. Judging by the number and scope of the comments of the draft guidelines, there is a great public interest and recognition of the importance of Pennsylvania Avenue and this site. But at the end of the day, the National Capital Planning Commission is the entity charged with responsibility to get it right, and we urge the Commission to take a long-range view and adopt measures that provide the opportunity to create an even more attractive and lively Pennsylvania Avenue in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Cheryl Court, followed by our last speaker, who would be Kingdom Gould.
Good afternoon, Chairman. My name is Cheryl Court, and I'm representing the Coalition for Smarter Growth. We're a regional nonprofit working on land use and transportation policy in the Washington Metropolitan Region. We are speaking about the guidelines, the draft guidelines, for Square 378 and 379, and wanted to express our support for the preliminary square guidelines as they are drafted by NCPC. They reflect significant analysis and attention to design details which will restore urban vitality to this important site. We understand that GSA is not supporting the current proposed draft and is probably seeking to look to loss of some of the two of the three rows of trees along Pennsylvania Avenue sidewalk. And as we appreciate that GSA is looking to maximize the building envelope for the value of the site, we ask that we fully consider the need to maintain the visual integrity and consistent form of our grandest avenue in the country. So we ask that, while we recognize that the sidewalk is indeed too wide, we would oppose narrowing it to the extent that we are concerned that GSA is seeking, and we concur with the preliminary guidelines and LaFonte's original plan and the two rows of trees and a sidewalk with at least a 30-foot width. If GSA's request for a larger building envelope derives from the concern about making the finances for an FBI location work, we then would ask that we instead find cost savings through reducing the amount of parking to be provided at suburban sites. GSA's push for significantly expanding parking at a relocated FBA site would certainly increase the total cost of the parking component of the project, and it would be a terrible irony to have the LaFonte plan and our grandest boulevard compromised to pay for the parking at a suburban location. Too much parking leads to other costs, including increased traffic and road infrastructure costs and lower metro ridership. So we just wanted to reiterate our support for the preliminary guidelines for the Squares 378 and 379, and the retention of the two rows of trees and at least 30-feet sidewalk. We also reiterate our opposition, as communicated in our July 11, 2016, letter to GSA's proposal to increase parking at the metro station locations being considered for relocation of the FBI facilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Kingdom Gould.
Good afternoon. I'm Kingdom Gould with Gould Property Company. It's a family-owned company, and we develop all kinds of real estate. We keep it, so we live with our mistakes and benefit if we do something right. We've built three buildings within the PADC area, two residential buildings, and one office building. The residential buildings would not have been built if it had not been a hard requirement of the PADC. And the PADC, by the way, made that requirement after we'd owned the property for 20 years, 15 years, so that was an imposition on us. The idea that the GSA may not have the same requirement that the federal government put on us is ironic, to put it nicely. And by the way, the arguments you hear from them, I know a little bit about maximizing FAR, I've done it a bit, are all arguments about maximizing the FAR. Even at a time when better buildings are becoming narrower, more light-filled, it's not just gross FAR that builds value. Anyhow, we were among the first to do it, and as it happens, those two residential buildings have been wonderful investments. And as an investment, they are steady, they bring residents, they bring taxes from residents, and they bring users for the retail, and actually, it feels kind of good to have built them. So we're looking forward to keeping those buildings, and if we can figure out how to do it, I would think the GSA and the big dogs who are going to be developing this ought to be able to do it. The mix of uses is important on this site, and you need to require the retail, too. But the more important thing, really, I think, is the avenue, which several people have pointed out is America's Avenue. That's our people, all of ours, and we're really architecting the edge of that avenue, and that's the most important thing, I think, that we're going to do here, that you will And by the way, you can rent retail with two rows of trees. We're doing it on Mass Avenue right now, in one of your pictures, where I think you had 55 feet noted there. First thing that leased up, the retail. Let me see where I was. So I know you can lease retail. The retail you'll hear doesn't work because it's too far away and so forth. What you'll find, I think, if you look at retail and speak to the retailers, they want continuity, and they want company. So if you can have more retail in a line, you will overcome a lot of the objections of you're too far from the curb. Retail baguettes, retail. And I've got some other stuff about our First Amendment rights to stand there and petition our government, because this is the place where we do it, and you need space to do that. If you want to have the people come out to seek redress from the government, Pennsylvania Avenue's the place. Maybe you can't fit them all in the cartway, maybe you need the sidewalks. You want to have them, and before you narrow the cartway, you might think about doubling the bike lanes so that Mr. Speedy and Granddad can get along on separate lanes. And you may want to have a jitney. Think how much the failed trolley along H Street curries people up and down. You want to encourage those things. Don't build in it, you won't get it back. Keep the 45 degrees.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gould. That concludes public comment, public testimony. We thank everyone who took the time to speak on this important matter. With that being the end, we will return the discussion to Commission members. Welcome back, Ms. Miller, and who we rely on as a resource, perhaps. As noted, the EDR is sort of broken into four buckets, four segments, potentially four votes. The first one, if we could go to the first one, if you'll turn to page five of your EDR, you'll see that first bucket. These are, as Ms. Miller noted early on, and you may want to go back to the EDR recommendations, if you would. There were 18 items that were of general agreement, and so... The first one, if we could go to the first one, if you'll turn to page five of your EDR, you'll see that first, that first bucket. These are, as Ms. Miller noted early on, you may want to go back to the EDR recommendations, if you would. There were 18 items that were of general agreement, and so the notion is that we would vote on those presumably non-controversial items and move them out of the way and then proceed workmanlike thereafter. Let's get it back up on the screen, just to...
Yeah, I'm having trouble with the mouse.
Yep, just before we go forward, so we know exactly what we're doing.
Oh, there it is. Got it? Sorry.
Yep, go back one.
Go backward?
Yep. Back one, there we go.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, okay, I get it.
So that would be proposed vote number one. These are the generally agreed upon items. And so for purposes of discussion, can we have a motion on this?
It's still moved.
It's been moved, and is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. So this item is open for discussion. Sensing no discussion on the generally agreed upon 18 items. So it's been properly moved and seconded. This first vote, before you be acted upon, all in favor of this say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Unanimous. The, you know, advance the slide one. So the second vote would be that which is before you, and this is the bill-to line that may engender more discussion. To recap briefly, we sort of had three options that staff considered. One was, two were kind of the, what I'll call the extremes. One is maintain the existing 75-foot setback that you see now. The argument that is, in terms of the EDR, is that that may be more than sufficient public space and therefore may not allow a reasonable maximization of the development of the site. Option two was arguably the other extreme, going all the way to the bill-to line. And one could argue that in the EDR, that that provides not sufficient public space. Then third, the EDR one might call a compromise, which is the 30 feet, which allows, one would argue, maximum or reasonably maximizing the development of the site, a reasonable accommodation of public space, and also in balance with the, what, the south side of Pennsylvania Avenue. So that was, one could say, thoughtful justification put toward the proposed compromise, if you will, in the EDR. So for discussion purposes, can we get a motion on what's before you?
Still moved.
It's been moved and seconded, that which is before you for discussion, is their discussion. Mr. Shaw.
Chair, I had a prepared statement for the Commissioners. Just want to read into the record, if that's okay?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank NCPC and our fellow agency partners for the opportunity to be deeply engaged in guiding the future development of the FBI site through our role as a part of the Stakeholder Task Force. At the June 2, 2006 Commission meeting, I said the DC Office of Planning would consult with staff and other members of the administration on additional analysis and design thinking related to setbacks and other planning and design considerations. As both the nation's and DC's main street, both the district and NCPC have a shared reverence for Pennsylvania Avenue and a shared goal of maintaining its integrity and prominence. As the EDR notes, quote, "During the initial 106 consultation meetings, the DC State Historic Preservation Office has stated if the build-to line on Pennsylvania Avenue is not returned to the LaFonte plan right-of-way, it may constitute an adverse effect for the project", unquote. In addition, conversation with NCPC staff and the EDR do not provide sufficient basis for the note on page seven that, quote, "To fully establish the avenue as LaFonte had envisioned requires significant redesign and reconstruction of the avenue. As a result, I will not be supporting guideline E10A." We will look at our aspirations for 21st Century Washington, our city, downtown DC, Pennsylvania Avenue, and the squares that comprise this site as an opportunity to further reinforce the foundation of Washington's design and character, a foundation based on continuous and deliberate planning to create a capital worthy of our nation. Redevelopment of squares 378 and 379 present, once again, a once-in-generation opportunity to bring together new commercial life, residence, and vitality to the avenue in DC's downtown, demonstrating the best of the contemporary urbanism and remaining true to the original directive to be both lively, friendly, and inviting, as well as dignified and impressive. Both historic plans and current plans shape that great opportunity. For the district and the federal government, the comprehensive plan for the national capital is key, a unified plan comprised of two components, the federal and district elements. As a current guide that plan builds the 1974 Pennsylvania Avenue Plan and all prior plans going into, going back to the LaFonte plan. Additionally, the 1974 plan describes not only design goals but also economic and urban vitality goals for downtown Washington. We also believe that current planning efforts, including the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative, should continue to shape the vision for the corridor as much as historic plans. On the urban design side, we believe that the architectural controls for the FBI site should be more nuanced and flexible rather than merely attempting to match the federal triangle conditions and the character of the site that can be fundamentally different from the monumental government buildings and focus on what it means to be the entire city. I am also concerned that the highly prescriptive way the square guidelines are currently written takes away much of our opportunity as a commission to conduct meaningful design review of this development as much as 10 or more years into the future. While it's unfortunate that the notes that initially framed the recommendation do not highlight the Caloric Project for not just Pennsylvania Avenue but also the district's downtown, nor the positive working relationship of federal and local planning partners, I want to reiterate the district's commitment to partner with NCPC on a shared stewardship through the federal and local district, excuse me, federal and local planning for our vibrant District of Columbia. As the federal elements ensue the district elements of the comp plan state, quote, "Together the National Capital Planning Commission and the District of Columbia Office of Planning work to enhance DC as a great national capital and plan for its actable development through inspiring civic architecture, rich landscapes, distinct neighborhoods, vibrant public places, environmental stewardship, and thoughtful land use management." Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Is there additional comment or discussion? Hearing none. It's Mr. May.
So I just want to say a few words in support of the, of our second package of recommendations, I guess. So I support wholeheartedly the recommendations that were in the EDR with regard to square 379. The, I think what it recognizes is that we are dealing with a continuum of plans from LaFonte to McMillan through the 1974 plan and a few little episodes in between. I think it is well-considered, and LaFonte, right-of-way is, is certainly important, but it envisioned buildings that were much less, had much less height than what we are contemplating today. And so the analysis that was done and the view cone, I think, is especially helpful. And I think that it cannot be understated, the ceremonial and symbolic importance of Pennsylvania Avenue as we consider how we move forward. I also think that this is not, I mean, I think there's some comments that maybe this is, there were, the staff is merely trying to replicate what happens across Pennsylvania Avenue, or that it's some attempt to sort of split the baby or compromise. And I don't think it's that at all. I think actually it is a very well-considered strategy. It is consistent with what happens, or generally consistent with what happens on the south side of the avenue. But it is, it is, I think, well-founded in its own right. I think it is important to note that the LaFonte, or LaFonte himself described the avenue as having a double row of trees, and that was a critical, that is a critical component to maintain, and I think the recommendation preserves that, given the existing cartway width, and it allows for the possibility that the cartway width might change in the future and that therefore that principle might still be honored should there, the cartway width change and the plan for this particular site adapt accordingly and shorten the setback even more. I think that, let's see. I think that some of the slides that were shown here today demonstrate why moving the build-to line all the way to the property line is simply too close. And we see some really compelling images of what happens with the kind of sidewalk width that these recommendations prescribe. I'm just looking at that image of the south side of the avenue with the double alley of trees, even though we don't have there the activity between the outer row of trees and the building facade, I think it's easy enough to picture how that would fit in and how it would work and what a great experience that would be. I also just want to say that I think that the, many of the comments that we heard today and certainly comments that we received in advance of the meeting were, are very informative. And I think that, you know, we had comments from a professional tour guide about how important the avenue was and how important the height of buildings were, the limitation on the height of buildings was. The suggestion that, you know, that some of the, that the views that we see down Pennsylvania Avenue to the Capitol is what people want to see and the importance of preserving that. I also think that in terms of what we heard, just heard today, some of the comments, hearing that the Coalition for Smarter Growth supports the EDR, I think, for me, is major. They don't come here and testify before this Commission that often, but they are at the zoning commission all the time, and they are always advocating for greater density and more housing. And for them to understand that there is a bigger principle here and that it is, you know, what can drive the value of this city is some of these symbolic moments and that Pennsylvania Avenue itself is more important than simply maximizing the number of housing units that you could get there, I think is really significant. I also think that the statement by Mr. Gould, that it is not just gross FAR that drives value, is also essentially essential to the understanding of what we should be, how we should be acting here. I also appreciate the comment about Mr. Speedy and Grandpa. Because I may be Mr. Speedy right now, but I'll be Mr. Grandpa before too long. And I, and right now, it's not my favorite place to ride my bike. So more width would be good. Anyway, that's a complete aside. I also think that the guidelines, contrary to some of the comments that we heard and what we received, I think the guidelines are broad enough to allow excellent design. I think that in the various conversations that we've had with staff about the development of the guidelines, I have been urging that we restrain ourselves in many ways from going too far into design. It is not our job to try to design this, but it is our job to put the right constraints on the site so that what we get is a building that is appropriate for Pennsylvania Avenue. And it is not going to be a showboat of a building. It should be a building that works well with the context. It can be a beautiful building and it, and make a real statement. It can be that once-in-a-generation opportunity, but it doesn't have to be a spectacle, because the spectacle is already there, and we shouldn't be conflicting. Anyway, that's it for me.
Chair.
Mr. Dixon.
First, I want to express to the staff, I mean, I don't do it often, but I could do it always. Lot of hard work, lot of work went into this, and I appreciate it. Also want to comment on something that I always feel good about, too, the public comment folks are phenomenal, the type of thoughts they bring to us and ideas, and it's not inconsistent, they do it all the time. But we have to find ways not just to listen but try to include their thoughts in our actions. I did want to ask the planning office whether there was a, other than against the particular item, was there a suggested change or direction? I'm not sure we have the energy to carry it forward, but was there any suggested change?
I don't think at this time, so we're going to submit a public comment as well, some more of our recommendations and ideas as well. But, you know, I think at this moment, we just need to keep talking about this.
Yeah.
But, I mean, as we said, we just, without, with five seconds, we voted on the first 18 principles. We want to keep on saying we're partnering on this, but we'll put into the records some more in depth based off my comments.
But on this one, we have to say no, because...
Well, I'm, you know, I stated my opinion, we all have our...
Okay. Well, I have to listen to your direction sometime, all the time. Also, I have to think back about, you know, the days, was it the grandfather thing, Smiley? I don't want to play with that very much, okay? But, in fact, last time I tried to get on my bike, it was a little bit like this, and I got off, but I'm going to try again, particularly if I have a better, better car to go down. I remember when I served on the Pennsylvania Avenue early on, when we started this process, and it was a new government, a new city with leadership, and we had a real sense of spirit and energy that we kind of tried to bring to it. I think that still exists now, and I think this is an opportunity for us to be a part of that in this particular action. I kind of wish that we could do as we do with monuments and have sort of a jury, just say, look, somebody come in, here's what you got, and let's see what you can come up with that gets our attention and that we would like. I do agree with, that we do need to set some parameters, and I guess one of the main ones is a setback. I like the idea of the museum idea. I like the idea of having a connection at the second floor to give us a covered space over D Street that could make a very interesting venue for all kinds of things to occur, out of the weather mostly, and, but maybe, now I'm getting a little detailed, but just throwing out some thoughts. I think that this opportunity is special, and I hope that we do not constrain the creativity of those who come forward with ideas, because I think it's, there's a lot to be offered in this, in this particular action.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. That's right. Before you go, I'm going to ask, just to clarify, Mr. Shaw, your specific concern is with E10A, correct?
That's correct, because you have two, right? E10A is the one, the build-back line, right? And then, and then the subsequent conditions, so we would vote no for the whole thing. But E10, but there's two pieces, right? There's the height piece, right?
Yeah, that's on the next slide.
Okay, did you guys put those two together, or that's two different votes?
So this is what I was going to comment on.
Okay.
Is that while we appreciate the concurrence with our DC partners, we voted yes for administrative and operational reasons, but we, to get, you know, move the things that we all agree on. But we would, it's just to get along, but this is not how we would prefer to approach the parsing of one guideline versus another. We would prefer and encourage that the, that the subject at hand be approached altogether instead of separating out pieces and considering them in isolation. I'm not going to hold forth at great length because our, GSA's position has been enumerated very clearly on many, many occasions, so you don't need to hear it again.
I just wanted to reiterate something that Kushner-May said about the public realm, and I would just, you know, echo everything you said, and add that I agree that the staff, I think, did a remarkable job in coming up with a strategy that's a smart strategy that allows for flexibility going forward. But I think essentially, the aspect for me that is so important is protecting that public realm. And talking about the LaFonte plan or the 1974 plan, the sidewalks and the public spaces were preeminent features when LaFonte originally planned the street. So it's just really, I think, a smart solution to at least allow for that 30-foot setback so that we can think these through. The trees, the very eloquent statement from the American Society for Landscape Architects really put into words what I was trying to express at the last meeting. That is a very special place, and as Mr. Gould said, don't build on it, you won't get it back. That's a really important thing for us to remember. And I don't think it's too prescriptive to put forward a solution that allows a very creative developer and designer to come in and design around a public space, which is what really makes that site special and where you will gain value. And I respect that GSA needs to maximize value. It's an unbelievable opportunity. But, you know, you're going from zero to 60, you know, you're not getting value there. Looking holistically, I'm hoping, seeking value on one site, you're also looking to minimize cost on the other site. So the comments from the Sustainable Growth Coalition is really important when we think about the parking that has previously been discussed for the new sites, which way exceeds... about the parking that has previously been discussed for the new sites, which way exceeds anything we would recommend. So trying to look at it holistically and thinking about the importance of Pennsylvania Avenue, I, I really have to compliment the staff for coming up with a solution that allows us to do all of that and keep things moving forward. And I, you know, I have to say, I was a little dismayed at the reminder that was given to us today that should we not, should the guidelines fall short of the objectives that GSA wants to see, they have the authority to employ an alternative approach. And I just hope we can continue to keep working on this because it is such a unique opportunity to do it right. There's so many viewpoints of how to do it. So that's what I wanted to express.
Mr. Griffiths?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of quick comments. First of all, I think we make great steps and assumptions of what developers might actually do, which I think doesn't do great respect for the, the folks that will go after this site and actually design it. I was really struck with, first of all, the package that the staff put together is excellent. I don't need to say that, as we've all said it. But really, aren't we putting together guidelines that are supposed to bring flexibility and bring creativity? There was a comment by one of the individuals that mentioned that is, and as we mass this out, we're probably all a little bit afraid of what those huge blocks look like. And aren't we looking to have designers come and carve those out and create spaces? I think we all can agree on Pennsylvania Avenue that we need public space, but we need it defined. Public space is successful by the building's definitions and the street edges. All of that together, we're not looking at today. And I think it would be a disservice for us to limit in any way the creativity that can come, that can create those, you know, undulations and carvings of the façades that might actually create very special spaces there. We, I've heard a lot of statements today in the readings that might give one an impression that there's a great consistency along Pennsylvania Avenue and we're somehow advocating breaking it. But if you look at even the tree lines, even the setbacks, there's historic and there's new, there's differings altogether. And I think we have a creative place. I don't, I don't know what Mr. May was saying in his comments, that this shouldn't be a standout building, but I think there's an opportunity to make this a very special building. And I don't think that will ever compete with the Capitol. It will be its own building, but it has to be, has to be focused on it, has to be given the opportunity to become what it really should. And I can go on, but I think I would, I would support wholeheartedly in our entire adoption of the guidelines, that we are descriptive of what we want, which I think the staff has done well, but not so dogmatic of demanding where things should be and let that come to fruition. If I'm not mistaken, this probably won't be the last time we look at this. And so I think there is opportunities, if some architect was going in the wrong direction, that there will be ample chances to redirect. Thank you.
Mr. Galus.
I also want to thank the staff. You know, I think that the value of this avenue, which to me is America's sort of front door, it's our, the connection between the Capitol and the White House on the federal triangle is such an important and iconic space that we can't think about one building in isolation of that bigger presence. And so the value that will come to anything that happens on, on Pennsylvania Avenue is going to be because the avenue is the place to be. I think we see that with the, with the old post office revitalization, that's just had a huge investment there. There's clearly, so ultimately, it's paramount in our deliberations. I think that we think of it as a long-term view. And in that sense, I, and now then, sort of looking at LaFonte, and I wonder if you could put up number 47, which is the Capitol Grill. You know, when I think of LaFonte's vision, he, he did envision this build-to line, but he also envisioned the two row of trees. And when we get to the right side, this is mislabeled, by the way, these are exactly, the labels are exactly opposite. Sixth Avenue is the Capitol Grill on the right. And this is what we would have as sort of the guideline. One row of trees, not two, that LaFonte envisioned. And, and I think it's simply inadequate to think that that is something that we want to contribute to the iconic nature of what Pennsylvania Avenue is going to be for long after we're, we're gone. So in this case, I just don't think it adequately provides the amount of public space that is necessary to keep this as America's front, front yard, Main Street. I think also the notion of ground floor uses, if you were to imagine what, what I'm imagining for ground floor uses on Pennsylvania Avenue, and you try to say, well, where would that go in this image? You'd have to question how that would even be realistic. The, the opportunity to create a more vibrant public space that people could use flexibly as sidewalk and/or as cafe, restaurant and other retail sort of opportunities on this street would really be, I think, very limited. And, you know, to address the notion about the design profession and the creativity that could come from the design profession, I certainly wholeheartedly believe in that concept. And I know that the great designers, when given the envelope with which they work in, and they do this very often, always, we work within an envelope, we understand still great things can come from that envelope. So I don't see it as constraining the design opportunity here. I see it as creating the framework with which we can both as, as a commission, ensure the quality of what Pennsylvania Avenue is, and then let's turn it over to the designers who can then, in their hands, create something really wonderful. And I'm certain that that is going to happen here. I think that's all I have to say for now.
Thank you. Mr. Cash?
Well, I just wanted to mention, I'd be remiss, given Chairman Mendelson's very strong comments at the last meeting on this, that I think there is still something to be said for advocating for, expressing support for the 75-foot existing condition. He talked a lot about the lack of, of engagement on, in that area right now and the lack of uses, partially because of the kind of building it is. But he also talked a lot about the historic context of this, where this was supposed to be the really great avenue that we had. And if you actually go back and think about it, when we had the smaller carriageway and you had some 60-foot houses or 60-foot buildings, I think one of my favorite ones is this V-shaped one that you had on a, one of these similar to that. The actual view shed looking down the street with those lower houses and even a narrower carriageway would have been a lot wider than the 90 degrees that I think we contemplated here. So I didn't want to let this discussion go without still kind of saying that there is something to be said for maximizing the wideness you can get wherever you have it. But I think that given the staff's work with this, and one of the things that we'd asked them to do in our last discussion was look at the different options and give us the, those comparisons, I think that the, the middle ground is still a very good compromise. I think that we'd be supportive of that. But I just didn't want to let it go without expressing that there is still some importance for maximizing.
Yep, agreed. Thank you. Can we go back to the package that's before us so that we're clear on what we're voting on?
Chairman, I want to say another, just two more points.
Yes, sir.
One, I wish we could have it as a minimum rather than a fixed number. And then you give a person a good chance to come in, an architect, to say, I think we can open it up wider and do this for you. We don't want to go any tighter than 30, but we may want to go more if we can make a case for it in our design work. The other thing I want to point out, and it kind of slipped past me, someone mentioned it, signage. I hope we get consistent about this signage, because we got some signage on Pennsylvania Avenue that is just out of, unbelievable. And I want to make that point.
Thank you. So not sensing... I'm sorry? You may.
I think there's some misunderstandings. So as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, Pennsylvania Avenue is very unique and the Pennsylvania Avenue plan is kind of a general plan, it provides general direction. But then there's a whole series, like this thick, of square guidelines that actually pertain to each parcel. And admittedly, the square guidelines that have been developed over the past for each of the parcels or each of the squares along the avenue, some are a little more general, but some are very prescriptive. They actually have, you will have 562 residential units and, you know, you know, they have very, very specific numbers and they actually control the development form much more than what we're suggesting. So what I'm saying is that there, there is a range, but what, what we also need to understand is that the process that's set up, these guidelines may, we may not, you may not see the development plan again. The, the way the process is set up is that the guidelines control development, the development plan then is prepared by the developer. GSA staff and NCPC staff look at the development plan and compare it to the guidelines. If it meets the intent of those guidelines, we technically are approving the development plan. It's not something necessarily our commission or the zoning commission would see. Now, it would go before the Historic Preservation Review Board and it would go before the Commission of Fine Arts. Same thing happens at the permit stage. So what we were hoping to accomplish with this package, and if we remember back to Diane's presentation back in the, the summer, most parcels were actually, square guidelines were developed for most parcels by the PADC. They kind of set the general parameters. Because this project, this project or the FBI site was under development and because it was federal, there were no guidelines developed. So what we're doing right now is developing that first set of guidelines, which is really trying to set the parameters for protecting local and federal interest. That being said, what the process does allow is that really creative developers that have, I think, probably spoken here today, have every ability, and the process actually allows it, for them to come up with a development plan. And if it doesn't fit within the, the guidelines that we've developed, they have the ability to come back to the commission and amend the guidelines. So then the commission could actually evaluate, is this great design, is this beautiful project, how do the trade-offs work? You know, maybe you can move the building lines and maybe you can do this, but the guidelines, I don't see how today we could develop a set of guidelines that could predict all of that, particularly when we don't want to be in the business of designing the developer's project. So I just want to, I just want to make that clear. I just don't want you to go away with a false assumption. And that's kind of the way this process works. And I'm just going to use an example, the museum, most of you may have, some of you may have been here and maybe not, but you may have known about it. There was a set of guidelines for the museum. Polcheck came in and came up with the design that we see today. And that was actually, the design guidelines for the museum that we see today were amended, so that his guidelines amended the previous guidelines. So I don't know that this is going to resolve what you need to talk about here today, but I just want to be clear about how that process works. Is, once these guidelines are approved, that may be the last time you see it. And this is a very significant project. So we hope, I guess what I should say, and this, I don't think I'm speaking out of line here, staff hopes that a developer will come back in and look to amend these guidelines. That's the, that, that would make perfect sense. But what we're trying to do is to set some basic parameters. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Mr. Griffiths?
One question, and then I also wanted to say, and I appreciate your, your comments in terms of each of the squares has guidelines, and actually in our packages, part of the guidelines for this square, and it actually does include signage. But let me ask, because from the, the DC statement, there is one piece that jumped out at me, that it says the state Historic Preservation Office has stated that if a building to line on Pennsylvania Avenue is not returned to the LaFonte Plan right away, it may constitute an adverse effect for the project. So how does that impact all of the process going forward?
That's something that would be worked out through the consultation process, which is another very interesting factor with the projects within the PADC boundary, is once we make, once the commission makes its decisions, then that's when GSA, and GSA accepts those decisions, then that's when the consultation process would start. And what's interesting is when the, because the PADC plan was done in the early, late 60s and early 70s, it was really before the historic, a lot of the historic preservation laws came into effect. So it was in the very early years. One of the things that the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation required was that these square guidelines be, not these, but square guidelines in general, be developed to, to ensure that we didn't have adverse effect on historic resources, because they didn't feel that the plan was detailed enough. And so each time those come through, you know, we evaluate that. Now, that being said, we also have a cultural landscape that's important here as well. So this is something we've debated amongst the stakeholders, is how to balance this. And just, if it, if it does have an adverse effect, that doesn't mean it can't be mitigated and that we can't, excuse me, do you need something? That we can't mitigate that. So, I mean, we've got to work that out, but it could also be an adverse effect that we're going to be destroying all the, the public space or, I'm, I'm, I'm going to say it, we are, doing away with all the public space for the avenue.
I understand that and I really appreciate it. And I think one of the successes of, of the staff's report actually was illustrating the, the balance, for one, the LaFonte Plan, which is not the LaFonte Plan right now on this parcel, to the McMillan and all the impacts that has changed over the times. And here we are at a point of which we could change it again and we're all, fingers crossed, changing it for the better. But I am sensitive to the fact of the district's role and the district's responsibility and the strong comments that are made by the District of Columbia and how it impacts this. Thank you.
I agree.
Mr. Cash?
I have a question now that you bring up the State Historic Preservation Office. So you mentioned there's square guidelines for every other square that's been done. Has Chippewa taken a similar stance when the square guidelines have not brought it all the way up to the LaFonte line in the past?
Not to my knowledge.
And the other thing is saying that this would be in...
Actually, I didn't realize David was here, maybe he could answer. Okay.
So Chippewa has not taken this stance in the past on other, on similar square guidelines?
Apparently, the issue has not come up in the past.
And then the other question is to constituting an adverse impact. I mean, my understanding, and I'm not a designer, I'm a layperson when it comes to this, but I mean, the adverse impact, it would seem to me, is if you are exceeding the LaFonte line. So I mean, if you had a, if you had the build-to line and someone encroached on the public space, I would think that would be the adverse impact, not, not building up to that line of the public space, which means that almost everything along there would be adversely impacting this, the public space at this point. More of a comment question, but yeah.
So sensing, Mr. Dixon?
I just hope that this doesn't become a, a real estate transaction issue of funding the FBI. I don't want the FBI, FBI after me, okay? But funding, funding, funding the FBI building and making sure that we get enough out of this one to pay for it. And I hope the vision and the direction that we're talking about here and all the testimony that these citizens that we've presented is looked at by the, whoever gets, or desires to design this building and not be driven by the bottom line that we have 100, 1,000 million, 20 million to pay for 20 million. I hope that doesn't happen.
So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Dixon, I want to reiterate for us that, one, is integrity of our historic preservation process, which generates a lot of people and they're trained experts and they didn't pull this out of the sky, is the first piece. But also, two, for me, it's not a real estate transaction, this is...
I understand that.
...an ability to transform Washington DC's downtown. I had never heard the term pen quarter before, right? Until we saw things like the Spy Museum and the National Gallery be rethought. And so for me, as we go back and forth on this, I appreciate the development potential, but it's about design, it's about program, it's about flexibility to understand that our city has changed so much over the past 15 years that for us to lock in what we're doing in 2016, when something that happens in 2031 could, could just really lift up and... and elevate and advance ideas, I just really want to make sure in the end that it's, it's being positioned that way for part of the reason why the district's so strong about this and wants to make sure that we're so flexible. It's two things, right? We're making sure we maintain historic character and historic intention, but two, that we are being forward-thinking to understand how we grow within the environment. And so last thing I'll say on this is, we did an event in March that really highlighted the fact that some like 70% of the new development in the district that takes place in historic areas. And we're seeing that on 14th, we're seeing that on U, we're seeing the ability to merge those two together, but one of it is that we are adhering to the historic integrity as laid out by the State Historic Preservation Office and support the Office of Planning. So that's where, I just want to give context to our statement as well, that it's not, you know, we're not pushing, we're happy about the economic development for sure, we're understanding those thresholds, but for us, we're seeing how this works, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Eric a question? When, you know, that 70% of development in the historic zones, which were designers of some of those, do you have a sense of how much of them are affected by the build-to line and are they building to the build-to line? Or are they stepping back from that optionally because of great design ideas?
You'd be like Kojo and ask me what the address is of the FBI building. I'll say at least right now that we'll, I'll make sure that's addressed further in the comments that we have that are submitted. That's something I still want to get, I know what I don't know, and I don't want to ask him right now, because I call it planning around the table. We don't plan around the table in the Office of Planning, so I'll get that information to you shortly, or to the commission, Mr. Chair, for that.
Ms. White?
You know, I just so appreciate your comments, Eric, and I guess the one thing I would say is, I think the beauty of what the staff has put forward is that it's not locking us in. And I really so appreciate Elizabeth's explanation of the process going forward. And I think a lot about, I was in a meeting with Alex Garvin last week, who has a new book out called Making Cities Great. And he gave this amazing talk about the responsibility of planning, and we're a planning agency, to protect the public realm and that that's what we really should be focused on and sort of setting the stage for what private investment comes afterward. So I really appreciate the balance and also the fluidity. These are, these are all different plans that were made at different points in time. So your point about us sitting here in 2016, not knowing what 2031 is going to bring, think about the LaFonte Plan and what they were putting forward. So it's an awesome responsibility that we have, but I really think that protecting the public realm is the most important thing we could do here. I totally agree, this could be a transformative project, and I think creative designers will be all over and, and smart developers will be all over wanting that site above all others. So I, I think, too, having this be a minimum of 30 feet and trying to seek that balance, again, is really smart. So that's why I wholeheartedly support the recommendation.
Okay, the matter before us is on the screen, and this in your EDR is roughly from the bottom of page five through the top of page 12, just so we know exactly what we're doing. Sensing no further discussion, has been properly moved to second. All in favor of this second package of recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
Noes, raise your hand. One, two, three, four. You have those? Okay. So that passes, did you guys both, passes, I think, six to four. Next package of recommendations, number three.
Actually, did you pack, you passed the whole package?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Yep. There we go. So number three is square 378, centering on the height issues. And this is on page, basically page 11. I'm sorry, page 12. Is there, for this package, is there a motion for discussion purposes? It's been moved and seconded, so the matter's properly before us for discussion. Mr. Gallus?
I have a question. If you could go to, I think, slide 90, is where you.
You're really something.
Try to pay attention.
You do, I know. Makes me very happy that someone paid.
Well, I was trying to understand the 10-foot height difference between the 110 feet on the corner of E and Ninth, which is at the sort of highest point of the side, as I'm gathering. And then as, as the building goes down to Pennsylvania Avenue, there's an additional 10-foot height of topography. The building is, the street goes down toward Pennsylvania Avenue. So, so I, what I took away from your comments, I just want to clarify this, is that, so at, at E and Ninth, the motion is, or the, what do you call this, recommendation, is that we'd limit to 110 feet at that location on that corner.
Initial height.
Initial height, okay. And then as the building sort of moves toward Pennsylvania Avenue to the south, it would actually be at 120 feet to D Street. Okay. I thought, and then, and then further, just as the building to the west, where we have further step-ups as we move away, the proposal is, the recommendation is the one-to-one step-up to, up to 160 feet maximum, including penthouse. Is that correct?
That's correct, and that's pretty consistent for the, for the entire avenue.
My question then is on 160 feet, and I, this is a technical question, I don't have the answer to, but as I understood it, penthouses don't need to be considered as part of the maximum height, and so I'm wondering if that's true, number one, and number two, why we chose to sort of include those in the limit below 160 feet?
So the Height Act actually talks about an extreme height of 160 feet, and that's been applied along Pennsylvania Avenue to mean that all mechanical equipment or, you know, occupied areas be within that ultimate height limit. Most other projects along the avenue, the museum being the latest, there was great, I think, probably negotiation and, and working of that building so that their mechanicals and their occupable space is actually sunken within their ultimate height. And I, and actually, there's someone here that worked on the project, but, and I can't give the exact details, but as I understood it, or as I understand it, there was a height limit on that building. And then when Polczek came in with his proposal, they worked at trying to reconcile how to get the height he needed in the penthouse equipment. They were required to sink their mechanicals into the building, but I believe they were actually given at that point in time a little additional height. So that's what I was kind of talking about earlier, is that it's impossible for us to, to try to address all these nuances. So there is the opportunity, when the developer does the redevelopment plan, that they can come in and, you know, as long as we're following our kind of basic construct, they can, we can work to make their project work. And I don't know if someone else might have been here during that time that might have more knowledge than I do, but that's as I understand it. Did that make, was that clear?
Basically, everything, though, that's subject to the PADC plan is at 160 feet, except for, including penthouses, except for that minor exception at museum?
Well, the museum doesn't go to 160.
Doesn't go to 160.
They're actually under 160.
Okay, so, it's everything.
But there are a couple of exceptions. There has been the allowance for like a stairway, you know, stairway well that will allow access onto the roof. I think, if I'm not mistaken, because we've talked about this in the development of the guidelines in our stakeholder meetings, that we would actually allow like an elevator override, because we are encouraging rooftop uses these days, and that if you're going to get people to the roof, you need to get away, you need to get them, you need to get them up there. So there, there is some exception to allow stairway and elevator override if it's set back and not visible from the surrounding streets.
Is that, is, number one, is that driven by the Pennsylvania Avenue Development Corporation regulations or the Height Act? And number two, is that, is that discretionary within these recommendations that we're voting on today?
I'm, that's a little bit of an interpretation that I would like to consult with our legal counsel. Maybe we can answer on that. So I understand it. The Height Act says, and I don't, I mean, it does say this, an extreme height of 160 feet. We do know that, you know, there's been the new penthouse, or the new height regs, or the amendment to the Height Act that allows the penthouses to go up. The zoning code does address that additional height on Pennsylvania Avenue, but because the Pennsylvania Avenue Plan has been very consistent, and it's been very consistent of how it's treated, all properties along the avenue, it's my understa, it was our opinion that we should stay within that confine. If that's something that's flexible or we can look at changing, I would need to consult with our legal counsel.
Well, so, I mean, we're looking at an image that has 161 feet here. And so maybe that's part of that rooftop stairway and elevator access waiver that you were referring to. I'm just trying to understand how we, what, what these guidelines are going to do to future development opportunities as they evaluate them.
Well, the guidelines do say that the maximum height of 160 feet inclusive of the penthouse structure. I will say that, you know, first of all, we don't have vertical surveys here, we're using, you know, GIS and CAD, we're using the best data that we have. Could that be 162 or 158, possibly? And we also have found that over time, the building at 1201 was supposed to be 130 feet in height, but by the time it was built and measured, it, it's actually, from our records, it's showing 132. But it's, it's not, it's a little bit of art, not a science.
So just, so just to be clear then, we're trying to stay within the Height Act, that's our directive in terms of the recommendation. And if there are exceptions, those would be considered outside of these recommendations.
Yes, and that would also be the opportunity for the developers to come back with their development plan and show their exceptional design, and, and the commission may, you know, very much agree that in order to give here, you can, you can give there to get here. That being said, we can't violate federal law.
But Elizabeth, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm new here, so I apologize. I'm going to keep using this new thing for a couple of years, so, I like it.
Good luck with that.
But, but if we aren't going to review it again, which is a possibility.
Possible.
So how would it be that we might look at something above 160 feet to see what kind of great designs come forth? We may not have that chance. It's the kind of reason I'm asking these questions.
Well, I think the important thing to, the concept to think about, Marcel, you want to answer that?
Yeah, I think you've raised a lot of good questions. I think this is a preliminary draft that will go out to public, and so what we should do probably over the next month is get you a definitive answer before you adopt the guidelines in December. So I think we, there are some things we don't know the background on, because there isn't institutional knowledge that would kind of fill that, so I think we owe you probably the correct answer, and I think we could draft the guidelines for final review that would accommodate your concerns.
Thank you.
So I'm, I'm also kind of new here. I think that the, the one really significant exception is might have been one stairwell on one building that was for rooftop access, and that was a co-driven issue or something like that. I don't think that we ever contemplated, at least in discussions up to this point, the notion that an elevator overrun that would allow rooftop access, so in other words, something that's at least 15 feet above 160 would be in the mix. You know, if it popped another foot above, because that's what gave you access to the top floor, which is already set back and has terraces and things like, I mean, I think that, you know, maybe that was contemplated. And there are also, you know, there are always vents and things like that, that, you know, might pop above 160, but they're, if they're less than four feet, they're, the way the Height Act is interpreted, they don't really actually exist. So, anyway, based on my minimal experience.
Mr. Griffiths, did you have something? Yeah, a quick question. The 110 that you, we are trying to set on Ninth and E Street, is there a data line that's, that is set for, or how did we arrive at 110? And the corresponding building actually that we're in now is 120 at the midpoint of the building, correct? So is it taller at Ninth and E?
We'll get back with you on that. The elevation could change, but how we derive the 110 is the Height Act. E Street is the largest street around the perimeter of 378 at 90 feet, and so 90 plus 20 gets to 110.
Right, but what you're asking is that we set a measurement point at the corner rather than mid-block?
It actually gets you a higher height.
Okay. That's all I'm asking, to see where and why that's happening.
If we set it mid-block, it would be a lower height.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
Can we go back to slide 103, just so that we see what we're?
Oops, sorry about that.
No, I am, because of you, I have to keep trying. So this is the motion before us for the third, has been moved, oh, is there, I think it has been moved to second. Yeah, it's been moved and seconded. So it's properly before us. So that's sensing no further discussion, right? All in favor of package number three, before you, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
One no? One no. Nine to, nine to, nine to one.
This should be easy.
Yep. And then the last is just directing staff to put these out for public comment, any discussions, but moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
Actually, I think it's eight to one we're missing. Previous vote was also eight to one. Okay. Thank you. That was a substantial piece of work that is potentially quite consequential for America's main street. We're grateful to everyone in the public who turned out on this as well. And again, this is preliminary, we still have miles to go on this.
I was trying. You do it.
Yes. We had motion for everything. Yeah. I was, dutiful in getting these up for public discussion.
Were you counting that?
Huh?
Were you counting?
Yes. Yeah, we had, the two congressional votes were not voting, so we're operating on ten, so. Come here. Thank you. Thanks for indulging.
Sorry, I just.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wrote a little note, Jennifer's going to give me, and I can just say that, you can call them and say that. So I just wanted to, it's going to be one minute. But I probably.
Thank you, Joan.
I'm good, I'm going to see if I can.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I don't know, she just, yeah. We could return the, we have one more item to, to do, a significant action item, so if we could return to order. We're going to agenda item number 5A, which is preliminary and final approval of site and building plans for the Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Library Rehabilitation and Modernization. And we have Ms. Hirsch, welcome.
Okay.
I'm sorry, let's, let's stand down for a moment. I was oblivious that we don't have everybody here. Yeah. We could go fetch our commission members.
Coming back? Over there. Ms. Hirsch is here, so she's coming back.
Yeah, I thought they'd excuse themselves. If only we had a sergeant-at-arms. Yep. Ms. Hirsch, why don't you go ahead and, please?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The District of Columbia Public Library has submitted preliminary and final plans for the rehabilitation and modernization of the Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Library. MLK Library is located at Ninth and G Street in downtown Washington. Nearby attractions include the Old Patent Office Building, which houses the National Portrait Gallery, the Verizon Center, Mount Vernon Square, and the City Center Development. The building in sight are bound by Ninth Street on the east, G Street to the south, a closed private alley between the library building itself and the church office building to the west, and then G Place to the north. The library was designed by Ludwig Mies van der Rohe in the international style. It opened in the early 1970s, and here you can compare a few current views with photos taken just after the building opened. On the upper left, you're looking northwest from G and Ninth Street. On the upper right, you're, is a view down G Place, and on the lower right is a comparison of the view from Tenth Street looking northeast. MLK Library reflects many principles that you see in other Mies van der Rohe buildings. For example, the building has an exposed steel structure and curtain wall system with applied I-beams. In addition, the first floor is predominantly glazed and features a recessed loja. The building is listed in the National Register of Historic Places and also in the DC Inventory of Historic Sites. That landmark designation extends to the interior of the first floor. The building is also memorial to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and was the first memorial to Dr. King in Washington. There are several pieces of art in the building dedicated to King and his work, such as the mural, which is located in the Great Hall that you see on the bottom right here. The project has been before the commission on two previous occasions. In 2014, DCL provided an information presentation right after the commission initiated work on NEPA and Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. We've since concluded both environmental review processes with a finding of no significant impact for NEPA and memorandum of agreement for Section 106. Along with the public comments that we've received through the NEPA and the Section 106 processes, the library has held focus group meetings and surveyed district residents to solicit input on their ideas for a renovated library. The library also formed an advisory panel early in the design process, which was made up of individuals and organizations with special expertise or interest in the building. The purpose of that panel was to provide feedback and advice as the library moved through the design and development process. In January of 2016, the commission provided comments on the concept design. The commission supported the library's vision to transform the building into a premier facility that honors its historic significance. With respect to the proposed site improvements, the commission strongly supported improving the connection of the building to its surroundings and eliminating the east vehicle ramp in order to create an outdoor plaza at the northeast corner of the site. The commission also noted the project required balancing historic preservation, planning, and design issues with a focus on the four specific elements that are on this slide. Just quickly, as far as the project schedule, the library plans to transition to an interim space and start construction this spring, and the project is anticipated to be substantially complete by the spring of 2020. The preliminary and final plans include many of elements from the concept plans, including a fifth floor addition that includes an event space and public roof garden, improvements to the vertical circulation of the building, opening up the three upper floors to provide a level of transparency and connectivity that you see on the first floor. And then finally, in terms of site improvements, the library is proposing to lower the brick site walls on the east and west sides of the building to improve functional and visual connections to the surrounding environment. The project also includes the repair and rehabilitation of building systems. Included in that is the repair of the steel structure and curtain wall system. All of the glazing will be replaced, and the steel structure will be treated to address deterioration. Replacement of the glazing and addressing the structure will bring the building closer to the color and texture of the original finishes. So to review the first floor and site plan in more detail, on the west side of the building, the library is proposing to modify the loja on the west end by removing a portion of the brick site wall that separates the library from the adjacent property. They plan to introduce new programming and work with the adjacent property on, on creating a small plaza in that area. The library is also planning to activate the main entry by moving the primary public vertical circulation to the south cores that you see here, and, and involved with that is replacing some of the brick with glass to introduce a greater degree of transparency to the building. The north cores will be reconfigured and primarily used for staff use. And then as far as other site improvements, the library plans to lower the brick site wall along Ninth Street, close the east vehicle ramp to introduce a public plaza at the corner of Ninth and G Place. And finally, there'll be some minor improvements made to the loading dock on the north. So the remainder of the presentation has been structured to show how the project has evolved, and the library has responded to the commission's comments. I'll start with the proposed exterior site improvements at the northeast corner. Ramp and site walls that you see here are original to the building, but they block views and do not provide a pleasant pedestrian experience walking along Ninth Street. The commission previously supported removal of the vehicle ramp and lowering the site walls, and that was primarily to strengthen the connection of the building and the site to its surrounding urban context, and also activate the streetscape in this location. The other reason was primarily to reduce conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles, as currently there are two lanes that turn right onto Ninth Street in this location. Since the commission's concept review, staff has been working with the library as well as the District Department of Transportation to analyze the traffic and operational impacts that would result from closure of the east ramp. So the results of that traffic analysis indicated that the volume of traffic in and out of the garage was low enough that all the traffic could be accommodated on the west ramp. The garage is for employee parking and approximately holds 100 vehicles. Inbound traffic would continue to enter as it does today from Tenth Street to G Place and then onto the west ramp. Exiting traffic would also use the west ramp and make a U-turn onto G Place, traveling eastbound to Ninth Street. To facilitate the two-way operation on the west ramp, a limited signal system will be installed on MLK Library property. Incoming traffic would have the priority, and the traffic signal in the garage would hold exiting traffic until the ramp was clear. Along with the signal, one or two parking spaces on the north side of G Place would be removed and striping and signage added to clarify how the site access would function. DDOT did note in their comments on the EA that any improvements in public space would require additional public space review and further coordination with DDOT. By closing the east ramp and developing a solution for site access and incorporating the plaza, the library has responded to the commission's comments. The primary benefit of closing the ramp is creating the outdoor plaza in its place. The plaza will improve the streetscape, activate the corner, and provide a visual connection between the library and the surrounding properties. Entry to the plaza will be from the interior of the building through the east reading room. The library is planning a café for that portion of the space. The intention is that the G Street entrance will continue to function as the main entry to the building. Staff supports that approach, as it would be difficult to make a direct connection from the Ninth Street sidewalk, given the grade change in this location, but it would also present some security and operational issues for the library. So moving to some of the other elements of the project with respect to the entry vestibule, in the concept plans, the library was proposing to replace the brick on the interior with varying degrees of glass. The commission supported the introduction of glass and more transparency and the library's goal to activate the entry. The commission requested that the library continue to work with the review agencies on developing a solution that balanced historic preservation with the goals of the modernization project. In the final plans, glass will replace portions of the brick in the entry vestibule, but also on sections of the south exterior wall. Staff supports this design approach and also notes that the library did work with the DC State Historic Preservation Office and also the Commission of Fine Arts staff on this proposal. Staff is recommending that the commission support the design as it responds to the commission's comments by introducing a greater level of transparency, activating the entrance, and also respects the historic character of the building. Use of glass in the interior and exterior has several advantages. Visibility into the building will increase, which will help to activate the entrance and draw visitors to the building. The new stair and sculptural, and its sculptural qualities will be exposed and readily visible from a distance. One full corner of the core will be eroded, and therefore, the visual expression of the core's volume of space will be maintained. To minimize the adverse effect of removing the brick, the glass will also be introduced in Amisian vocabulary, in that the existing proportions and Molyon height will be maintained. Another benefit of introducing the glass on both the interior and exterior is that the visibility of the main entry and stair will be more noticeable from a distance, and that's both during the day and at night. Most people approach the building from the corners, and the entry and stair will be highly visible from those locations. Here you can see a view from Ninth and G Street. This is another view of the new stair and core from the interior of the entry vestibule on the left, and then another view back towards the core, standing in the main hall or, or Great Hall. On the interior in the Great Hall, since the commission's concept review, the library has revised the plans for the informal performance space, which is located under the King mural. While the brick below the mural will be removed, rather than converting a section of the loading dock into a performance space, a smaller area will be converted into bleacher-type seating, and performances or events would actually take place in the Great Hall itself. This revised design will contribute to activating the Great Hall in a similar manner as the previous concept, and will contribute to making the Great Hall a vibrant, active space. Here you can see another view of that bleacher-type seating. Along with the seating it provides during events, this area would also be available for visitors to gather, rest, or spend a few minutes when the library is open. Turning to the west side of the first floor, in the concept plans, the library proposed enclosed rooms or pods for small meetings or group study that you see here on the lower left. The commission requested that the library consider ways to avoid or minimize adverse effects by either reducing the number of pods or considering a transparent material so that the west reading room is perceived as a large, open space. In the final plans, the enclosed rooms have been scaled back and are more in character with the original design. The rooms will be rectilinear in form and semi-transparent, but also provide the programming space that the library requires. By changing the form and materials of the rooms, the library has addressed the commission's concerns, and therefore, staff is recommending that the commission support the final plans. Here are two additional renderings of the space. On the left is a view from the exterior, and on the right, a view from within the room, looking towards G Street. The proposed rooms are located towards the center of the space, but the perception of one large, open room remains, along with views through the space. The next few slides address the interior modifications of the upper floors. Overall, the plans remain consistent with what the commission reviewed in January. The spaces will be more substantially reconfigured and reprogrammed on the upper floors, but the idea is to open up the center portion of the building and bring the character of the first floor, Great Hall, to the upper stories. So here you can see a rendering of that center area on the second floor. The second floor will also house the children's area, which is on the right, and the teen area on the bottom left. One element to highlight in the teen area are the desks along the perimeter wall. These desks were included in the concept plans, but have been limited in the final plans to sections of the first, second, and third floors. The lighting of the desks has also been revised to minimize their visual impacts, particularly at night. And here's a comparison of the final lighting scheme on the right with what was proposed with the concept plans. On the upper left, the horizontal bands of light in the concept plans were the result of an integral lighting for the proposed desks. In response to the scheme, the commission requested the library balance new programmatic uses with the original lighting scheme to minimize visual effects. The library has responded by limiting the locations of the desks, but also eliminating the integral lighting in favor of task lighting. Staff's position is that by changing the lighting fixture, which will eliminate the horizontal band of light, the final lighting scheme responds to the commission's comments and is more in character with the original lighting design. To return to the second floor, an interactive slide is proposed for the children's area. This was also included in the concept plans. It has been slightly modified in that rather than terminate at the first floor, the slide will end at an intermediate landing, and there will be an adjacent stair with a connection to the main core stairway. On the third floor, along with opening the center area, which you see on the bottom left on the east side of the building, a double-height adult reading room is proposed. The idea here is to introduce a visual connection between the fourth and the third floor. The fourth floor will house the special collections area, and here is a view of that space and how visitors will experience views to the third-floor reading room when they visit it. In the center area of the fourth floor, directly adjacent to the new auditorium, the library is planning for an exhibition area. As part of the Section 106 memorandum of agreement, mitigation includes the development of an exhibit to honor Dr. King as well as Mies van der Rohe and the building's historical and architectural significance, and that exhibit will be located here. On the fifth floor, a new auditorium will be available for performances, lectures, and other types of special events and library programs. And then directly adjacent to the fifth-floor event space is the new roof garden, which will feature raised planning beds with integrated seating. As the existing building has a completely impervious roof, the project will provide over 35,000 square feet of green roof infrastructure, which will greatly improve stormwater management on the site. So to conclude, staff is recommending the commission approve the project, as the library has been responsive to the commission's comments, as well as comments from other review agencies and the Section 106 consulting parties. Throughout the design development process, the library has worked to balance historic preservation, planning, and design issues while. preservation, planning, and design issues while transforming the building into a modern So it's the executive director's recommendation that the commission approve the preliminary and final building plans for the rehabilitation and modernization of the Martin Luther King Jr. Library, to commend the District of Columbia Public Library for developing a project that balances historic preservation, planning, and design considerations, and to also note that the District of Columbia Public Library has addressed the commission's previous comments that any changes to the final plans would be required to be resubmitted to the commission for their review. And finally, to note that the, any improvements in public space will require a public space permit and coordination with the District Department of Transportation.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
It's been, we got public comment on this as well, but let's go to public comment first. We have four speakers signed up: Bill Rice, Robin Diener, and Chris Otten, each with three minutes in that order. Mr. Rice, welcome.
Thank you. I am Bill Rice, and I am speaking for myself, although I think you have the letter that is signed by a number of users of the Washingtonianana Division, the collection of the DC Public Library. And in a way, I am speaking for them, but officially, I'm just speaking for myself. And it's not so much about these plans that I addressed, but about the planning in general for what will happen to the Washingtonianana Division Collection during shutdown, the three-year, approximately shut down, shut down, shut down, shut down, shut down of the building and the provision for interim services for many users, both professional and non-professional of the collection. It's, it's one of the great assets of the library. It's one of the great assets of the city, and because of the problems with the DC Archives, which in another capacity, a number of us are working on, and the problems with Historical Society, we really need to keep it going during these three years when the MLK is closed. The, the letter points this out, has a list, which I won't go through, of specific services, collections, and so forth that we think should be continued, and the, the, the group that has been assembled to sign this letter points out that we want to work with the library in a, in a working group situation so that we can reach some kind of agreement and continue the services. This was prompted by the announcements of the interim space, which had no mention of Washingtonianana. We've brought it up, I've brought it up personally with the director several times, and we've been told in one communication that they, they, he is working feverishly on interim services for MLK, but again, nothing specific has been communicated to us, so we continue to, to press our case. I would also bring to the, in that connection where this need has not been addressed, the, at the, and, excuse me, this is dated August 17th, where I and others presented this to the trustees and the president of the, of the library. There was some talk there, again, of working with Historical Society, I gather, at the last meeting, where this came up, working with the Library of Congress, but again, nothing specific, and that worries us. Lastly, I want to just bring to your attention the FY17 Performance Plan draft, which talks, among other things, and of objective to connect residents to the city's past and future by providing access to experiences and in support for local history and culture. The initiative is to launch the DC Oral History Project, which is my understanding that that's part of Washingtonianana, and it's a great project, certainly support it. We want to work with, I think people are working on it, but again, there's no mention of Washingtonianana. That worries us, and we would like your input, support, goodwill to make, assure that the Washingtonianana will continue during MLK's shutdown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. I'm not sure we have jurisdiction over this issue, but it has been entered into the public record, so.
Well, you are an important body that says things that people listen to.
Yes, and it's in the public record, so thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Rice. Second is Robin Diener?
Diener.
Diener, excuse me. Thank you. Welcome.
Second vowel.
Got it.
So good afternoon, thank you. Well, that was a really amazing first item there. You must all be tired. Anyway, I hope I have some live brain cells. Anyway, I sent you extensive testimony on behalf of the MLK Library Friends, and you're all familiar with Friends groups. This one is a little bit different in that it represents not just one location, but the central library, so we have members from all over the city. And we wanted to reiterate from our earlier comments that we sent you that the Capitol, National Capitol Planning Commission require, on behalf of the public, that the DC Public Library carry out a citywide round of meaningful public engagement with feedback collected and analyzed and published before giving final approval today. Now, there's a ton of great things in this new library. The library, which is an excellent agency, excellent, has done a wonderful job of responding to the various commissions that it's had to go before it. But it's particularly necessary for this public building, perhaps the most important civic building in the city, that the public actually sign off on it. And I just got to say, the library has spun the public inclusion a little bit, I feel. They've exaggerated some things and so forth. But anyway, this can all be taken care of by a giant round of outreach to all the wards, all the Friends groups, and particularly the ANC's with their great weight. I was on the advisory panel that was a part of looking into this, and we had a great, a local ANC commissioner, John Tinpey, on that panel to help us look at the particular issues of his ANC downtown where the library is a part, but it is a central library. People all over the city use it. So I also wanted to say that the advisory panel, I don't want to have been used, and I feel like maybe I shouldn't have joined the advisory panel, even though at the time I thought it was a great honor and I looked forward to the collaborative work, and it has been good work. But it wasn't a public process. The meetings were closed. They were held on the fourth floor, which is not accessible to the public. And I think this, we just have to ensure that the public signs off on this. They may say, "Bravo, thank you so much, this is wonderful." There are many wonderful things in it, we feel, but as you know, if you saw my earlier comments, there are a few issues we remain pretty concerned about, one of which is accessibility of a fourth-floor, upper-story auditorium like that, but maybe that has been resolved. Anyway, what we most want to convey to you at this point is that public outreach and response must take place prior to a final design decision. We ask you to request that on our behalf. Preliminary approval would be great, but I don't think that you should give final approval, and, and to do so, and for the library to go out to the public and say, "Well, here we are to show you what we've come up with, but by the way, it's been approved by everybody," is a little bit cynical. And public involvement, as you know, a terribly important part of what goes on. I am also, I know my time is up, president of the DuPont Circle Citizens Association, which the House Tour, Historic House Tour is coming up on Sunday, the 16th. You might want to come. Those of us who are participatory in this way, we just feel like we encounter a lot of cynicism, whether it's the D Dot 16th Street Transportation Plan. This feels like decisions are made ahead of consulting us, so I just encourage you to uphold that principle, if you will, and thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much, indeed. And Chris Otten?
Okay.
Okay. And then I think Ms. Niehaus wanted to say 30 seconds of something.
I just want to thank the staff for all the work they did on this to get the library's rear corner on Ninth Street as more, more open to the city. The environment has changed from when the building was built. It's really a thriving neighborhood now, so I want to thank them for being, not backing down. And I also want to thank Elizabeth, who isn't here right now, for the work she did on the FBI site. And we, I was on the advisory panel too, and they, the library also presented a couple times already to the Penn Quarter Neighbor Association, our breakfast meetings, we have monthly meetings, and they will be doing that again next month. So really happy with the results. I personally am thrilled and just recommend that on the benches that they put some kind of vertical element to designate seats so that perhaps they don't become beds. Thank you.
Thank you very much, indeed. That closes, that ends our public comment period, so the matter is returned to the commission. Is there a motion on the EDR?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and seconded. Now it's open for discussion.
I'd just like to encourage the outreach that the testimony reflected there were concerns about, and offer the Anacostia Coordinating Council, we welcome you coming over to our community and speaking with us about this, letting us know about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gauss?
I, I just want to say how excited I am to have this project come up. I mean, it's, it's, it, it looks to me as though it's going to be an even better contributor to the city. I mean, it, as great a building as it is and what it represents, I mean, libraries are changing, and the, the interaction to the community is a very important part of what the library mission is, and I'm, I'm a little surprised if, if the community hasn't already contributed in this way over a two-year period, which I'm a little, I don't know what to think about that, but, but just in terms of the design itself, the transparency that is coming to the building, the, you know, it sort of has been somewhat prohibitive, I think. The wall has wanted to almost keep people out, and so opening it up is very, very exciting. And then also, from a functional standpoint, to see more of the, like, the performance spaces, both the, the sort of built-in seating and also the fifth floor. I hope that somehow access to that fifth floor is going to be not just through elevator so that people really are encouraged to move through the building to get to the fifth floor, but it's an exciting thing, and congratulations on the, the work that you're doing.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I just, I also wanted to acknowledge the hard work of, of Mr. Acosta on this. I know that after initial comments, there was a lot of, and, and staff too, a lot of work with the city leadership and the library staff and my staff to really get everyone to the same place. It was not hard, but just once again, get everyone the same language, understand and respecting timelines. I just really want to, you know, you rolled up your sleeves on this one, I really appreciate it, and, you know, and once again, our staff did a lot of work on this one, too. This is one of the times where we get it right, so, and there's not contention, so in that instance, yeah, I just really want to celebrate and lift up all the people who worked into this.
Thank you. Mr. Griffiths?
Yeah, quick comments. I just want to follow up some of the comments from the past, but also just point out several very successful, I think, on the design features, and what is alluded to, but the entrance and opening up that brick and opening up those stair walls. I mean, that, to me, I think the staff said it perfectly, you're going to now see that, and it's going to invite you in day and night. I think that's critical. There was a dead zone on this building that perhaps many, but I think one has successfully been changed, and that's on Ninth Street. In fact, I would go further to say that not only is it architectural design, but it's use design, and you're really changing the dynamic of what libraries are in this country. I think this is starting down that direction, adding a little café and that kind of mixed use into it is excellent. I can say that I was obviously a dissenting opinion that those red sculptural pieces in that large, open room were, I thought, dynamic and exciting. You have so many different uses trying to work together on that. I think being able and allowing designers to partition off uses in a creative way, I think should be applauded and supported. And then the last, again, I think I was dissenting, but adding on more than just one level to the, this building would have been absolutely exciting, even adding additional uses to it, but there we are, we're where, we are where we are, and I think what has been done is incredible, and it's going to be a great addition to a landmark in use and in architecture. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. May?
So I am very, very excited to see that this is coming to the closing stages of design approvals and, and will get under construction next in the spring, is that right?
Yes.
Really a fantastic development. I, I remember back when the discussion was all about replacing this library entirely, and I even remember touring it at one point because there was, we were talking about, like, retrofitting it as a Target.
Oh, my God.
And, not that I don't love, not that I don't love Target, but it's, I mean, it really is, it's, it's a, it's a very understated building in it, you know, the way it is right now, and there's certainly many functional problems with it, and I know some of those very personally from my prior work with the city government, but to see it actually be revived in this way is really exciting, and it, it may be a bit more modest than some of the earlier schemes, but I think that's kind of okay. It's, it's, it really is, it's a terrific thing the way, the way it has wound up, and I do think there has been, I mean, it is what it is largely because of public input, so I think it's been a, a big success, so I'm very excited that it's moving forward.
And Ms. White?
I just agree with everything that's been said. It really is exciting to see this great old building be re-energized in such a creative way, and kudos to the staff and the partnership with DC and the library to get it done. And walking past the space last night on Ninth Street and thinking about how different that's going to be is just really gratifying, so thank you.
Thank you.
You just had to say it, and since you brought it up. I, I, I was, that was my one off-note, I think, was the, were those big red blobby partitions, and they're gone, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so, yeah.
But the slide is there. The slide's there.
Slide is there, the slide is there. Sensing no additional discussion, it's been moved and seconded, right? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the EDR before you say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? It's unanimous, so thank you all very much. We've had two, three and a half hours, we've had two very noteworthy actions and worthy of every minute of it. Thank you so much.